Let me introduce my thank you.
Thank you.
So okay, for now. We got a lot of things.
You don't even need to. The chairman already said you don't get.
Alright. Oh my god. I'm sorry. I'm so. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What is this? One. Okay.
That's what they said.
I want to make this all the same.
He asked.
We.
There's somebody that.
Sorry.
Okay, no one answer.
It's just out there.
He's the same. And you don't care.
Where.
She has. No, she not. She wants to. Thank you. Okay.
Check. It's on your mouth. Same here. I know it. I sent you a. Already checked. Okay. Okay, but I want. My audio won't work well, yeah. So we'll have to do the audio over yours. Are you in another room? Yeah, so I have it, so. You said we did over there. We're gonna have to go to seventeen forty-nine. You said we did. Yep.
Yes.
And then it.
Yeah. Here, I know. Yes.
Ms. Manica, as long as you know which ones they are that you wanted to look at, I can pull up the zoning ordinance on it. I can also pull up an angry on. Just to get verification.
I think I know. Hey, man, but I'm a gentleman. I had a great time. I had a great.
Yes, it has. That's very proud. I saw.
Right, is that?
No, that's. So. We use that. There.
And then, and then.
I can't, I can't quiet for that stuff. It was interesting to see it. All that, I'm not.
It was good. From present.
I'm okay.
And then, and then. I can be used that years. I'm a former staff. I'm a, I'm, I'm just a. Small. Slime. Ten years ago. Don't easily do that. I am. Get out of my state. But it's gonna be alright.
Okay. What was the ten graphic areas? Saying. Yeah. All the time.
Yeah.
No, it's not what you think today. I'm up.
You guys, you guys do the little one.
Okay. Okay. I can be on the county portion, alright? Okay. Yeah, well, I think there's a concern. I think they wanted anything on that. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Highland Park City Council in person and virtual regular meeting scheduled for Monday. What do we have? April first here. April fifteenth. Make an adjustment on that right away. Uh, we'll skip the opening ceremonies and proceed right to the roll call. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you will, please.
Councilman Ashafi.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Council member Manica.
Yeah.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Right there.
Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Members of city councils have had an opportunity to review the agenda. So right now, the chair will be willing to entertain motions for.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
Could you please state those amendments?
I have a resolution that I would like to walk on regards to the bonding of the interim treasurer Lisa Staloski. I gave everybody a copy of it.
Is there support?
I second.
So we have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem Robinson, seconded by Councilman Ashafi to approve the agenda with that single walk on.
I also did walk on the council.
Yes, ma'am, if you would. Yeah, let's, let's have that. We'll have both of these read. If you will, Madam Pro Tem, since you made the resolution, would you read that out loud, please?
A resolution regarding the amendment of bonding requirement for interim treasurer Lisa Staloski. Whereas on March the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the City Council for the City of Highland Park, City Council, appointed Lisa Staloski to the position of interim treasurer to serve until the Wayne County Board of Canvassers certifies the results in the November fifth, twenty twenty-four special election, selecting a treasurer for the City of Highland Park. And whereas on March the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the City Council per City Charter for section four-eight, determined that an appropriate sum to be determined for the interim treasurer bond was two million dollars and resolved that the interim treasurer seek a bond for the amount prior to assuming the duties of her interim treasurer. And whereas interim treasurer Lisa Staloski was sworn into office past today's date, twenty twenty-four. And whereas securing a bond of two million dollars would require the City of Highland Park to produce documents to the bonding company that interim treasurer Staloski has not been unable to locate to date, despite cooperation with the offices of the current and former city attorney, the Wayne County Treasurer Office, as well as the city officials. And whereas interim treasurer Staloski cannot execute her duties as interim treasurer without being bonded. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council amends the two million dollar bond requirement for interim treasurer Staloski to the amount in excess of five hundred thousand and not to exceed two million. Be it further resolved that the City Council authorizes up to the maximum of ten thousand dollars to pay for the required bond. And be it further resolved that interim treasurer Staloski may retain a bonded agent of her own choosing. So as long as the City Council's directives are being met and the city attorney approves the bond as required under Article four point eight of the City Charter. And be it further resolved that upon receiving her bond, interim treasurer Staloski is to file her bond with the city clerk's office as per the charter and assume the duties of interim treasurer. And be it further resolved that interim treasurer Staloski shall submit to the city clerk a copy of her bonding certificate to be included in the packet for the city council meeting dated for today. And be it further resolved that after being bonded, interim treasurer Staloski is to present her bond to the Wayne County Treasurer's Office for its review and determination whether an additional bond is required for the processing of Wayne County funds and whether a higher dollar amount of bond would be appropriate for interim treasurer Staloski. And.
Oh, yeah.
Be it further resolved that if a larger or additional bond is advised for the interim treasurer Staloski by the Wayne County Treasurer's Office, approval for such will be brought before the Honorable Body for consideration. And be it further resolved that City Council clarifies its March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four resolution that Lisa Staloski shall serve in the position of interim treasurer until the Wayne County Board of Canvassers certifies the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty-four special election, selecting a treasurer for the City of Highland Park, passed and adopted the first day of April by the legislative votes of Highland Park City Council.
Mr. Council President.
So what, so I'm just a second. Right now, we just, I wanted to have that read out loud because we're talking about amending the agenda. So tha- that's one of the amendments that they're asking for the agenda. Uh, Ms. Square, you had an amendment, something that you wanted to add to the agenda as well?
Yes, I'm adding on a resolution to approve the trust amendments for the legal contract. We can finally put it to bed and it's all over. And that's when we have, I, all the sides have agreed. This is the final amendment to what council already approved. It's over, it's over now.
Okay. Hold on, hold on. Hold on now. Ms. Ashafi, if it's not related to the agenda.
Yeah, it is related to the agenda, sir. I would put my hand up as it was. I would put it up as it was. Thank you, Ms. Square.
Ms. Ashafi.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, in section six, community development, um, I would like to, I, I, I would like to have this item moved to a workshop. I need a little bit more clarity from Mr. Carter Clyburn about his, uh, his recommendation under B uh, for, for a resolution recommending revision of zoning ordinance, chapter twelve, ten point two regarding planning commission members. I would like him to put, I, I would like that to be moved to a workshop so that we could get a better understanding before we proceed in a vote on this particular matter.
So that will be only item B?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So right now, we have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem Robinson, seconded by Councilman Ashafi, that we walk on this resolution related to, this is a resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirement for the interim treasurer. We also have a resolution here approving the trust agreement amendments from the city administrator. Now, hold on.
It's Tuesday, so I'm here. Fourth bit for the result. That should give me some different data.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Madam Pro Tem, are you aware of the errors in this resolution?
What errors?
What errors?
Um, would you go ahead?
Well, there, there are just two, um, dates that need to be changed. In the fourth bit for the resolve paragraph, instead of listing it as the meeting dated April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, we asked that it be, uh, the meeting dated May sixth, two thousand twenty-four, which would be the next meeting. And then on the past and adopted clause that it be listed as the fifteenth day of April, two thousand twenty-four, rather than the first day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Just a point of reference, what day does she, she's not officially in her capacity, but what day does she go to get sworn in?
Uh, this indicates April fifteenth.
Is that day correct?
Uh, March ninth.
Okay, so we have several errors, so.
Alright, so.
So that, that can't stand, we have to change that.
Alright, then.
She's still not the treasurer because she hasn't been bonded, so that swearing in is.
Careful now.
Is irrelevant, so.
Careful now.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the.
Yeah, but she is the treasurer.
Okay, okay.
She is the treasurer.
No.
Okay.
No. Okay, so we have, we have a motion to amend the agenda to bring on this resolution regarding Ms. Staloski. This also includes the resolution approving the trust agreement for the amendments. Do we have any additional questions on the modification of the agenda?
Yeah, again, I mentioned, uh, six B.
Oh, yes, and six B to be moved to a workshop.
It's, it appears that we put all of these in one. Right. One motion.
So I just want to make sure we have it all.
Because if I want to say no.
Yes, ma'am. You're, you're, you're correct.
Y'all more than welcome to.
Yes, listen, 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 Ms. Manica. By, we, we're talking about, um, modifying the agenda. When these items come up in the agenda, then we can, we can vote on them then. Is that, is that fair? I, I, I get your point.
Why we're putting this one in there then? So if I want to say no to that, then that means I'm gonna say no to, to what?
Okay, so, so you, you're not wrong. Let me just say this, if these things go on the agenda, we'll have an opportunity to vote them up or down.
But it doesn't make it on the agenda. Well, it shouldn't be voted up or down at all. Correct.
Correct, so in the past, we voted on amending the agenda. You are not wrong. In the past, we voted on amending the agenda. Whatever people wanted to add to the agenda, it's their right to do so. When it comes time for us to vote on that item, then we can exercise our conscience as to what we think should actually happen. In order for anything to pass this city council, it requires a vote of three. So if your, if your conscience says that's not something that you want to vote for, it's on the record, it's been added to the agenda, you didn't have anything to do with it.
So we should just call for the vote.
I think.
So.
That we should make. Ms. Square is a separate. But she didn't walk that on.
Okay, fine, fine, okay, fine. It's per, per, per discretion of, of. So we have a motion on the floor to approve.
I didn't want what?
The agenda.
No, I didn't want what on, what is.
Oh, okay, so let's, let's be clear here. Let's, let's be clear. Um. Whatever comes onto the agenda is, can be brought on the table. If we don't think it's worth our votes, or if we're in favor of it, we voted either up or down. This is a simple thing of approving our agenda as it is. Is everybody on, everybody on board?
Everybody's on board.
Okay, everybody's on board. So we have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tem Robinson to approve the agenda pending adding the resolution regarding the, the bonding requirements for, for Ms. Staloski. And we also have a walk on from the city business administrator regarding the approval of the trust agreement. And Mr. Ashafi has asked for item six B to be removed from this agenda and moved to a later council meeting workshop. Yeah. So that's the only thing we have. So, actually, right, Ms. Ms. Manica, Ms. Martin, uh, you can also make a motion to amend the agenda. So right now, on the floor, we have this issue related to Ms. Staloski. We're gonna vote on that. And if you would like to make a motion to walk on Ms. Square's resolution, we can vote on that. And then we can get this agenda approved, because the motion on the floor is to approve the agenda. Once that is over, you can make a motion. And we can add this most important resolution approving the trust agreement to the agenda. We all clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, so right now, on the floor, we have a motion to approve the current agenda pending the resolution added by Council, Council Pro Tem regarding the, uh, amendment of the bonding requirements for Ms. Staloski. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on the approval of the agenda?
Councilman. Councilman Ashafi.
Okay, so to be clear, are we just voting on, uh, Charmaine's right now? Or we're voting on all three?
That's it, that's it. Then we, then we can make a motion to bring on Ms. Square.
No, we're just doing Ms. Staloski. You're just voting on Ms. Staloski.
Okay, okay, I vote yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes, with forty days.
Ms. Manica.
No.
Pro Tem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
No. Uh, Ms. Manica, if you wanted to make a motion to walk on this resolution approving the trust agreement, you're open to do so, please, would you?
I move to approve the agenda with the walk on from Ms. Kathy Square of the trust agreement.
Second.
So we have a motion further amending the agenda. That is the walk on resolution for approving the trust agreement with amendments. We have additional questions? Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes. Uh, and before we move on, Ms. Ashafi, under item six, floor is yours.
Yeah, so, um, I'm a little bit concerned about the reduction of this board, okay?
No, sir, so this, we're still approving the agenda. You wanted the item six be removed? I'm opening up the floor for you to go ahead and make that motion and we can get it on.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. So I'd like to make a motion uh, to have item six be removed from today's agenda and placed in a future workshop before it comes back to us of, of, for consideration to be voted on.
We have support?
Second.
And a second by Council Pro Tem Robinson. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll on that?
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Now, before we get started, we're gonna move this resolution for the approval of the trust agreement. We're gonna move that to item five. Yes, ma'am, this item five, that's item five. And then we're gonna move the resolution regarding the amendment to the bonding requirement to item six. Move everything else down.
Okay, okay, so the bond is gonna be item six. Okay. Oh, what about the, uh, the kiosk in, um, in item five? Is that gonna be five A?
Uh, no.
No.
No, that's, that's, that's gonna be item seven.
Okay, item seven, okay. Five, okay. Thank you.
Be good now. Okay, moving on to the approval of the proposed minutes in person and virtual regular meeting minutes for April first, twenty twenty-four. To the council, what's your pleasure on the approval of the minutes?
I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion on the approval of the minutes for for April first of twenty twenty-four.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Martin for the approval of the minutes from April first, twenty twenty-four. Do we have second?
Uh, second with questions.
Second for Mr. Ashafi, your question, sir?
Yeah, I noticed that these bids did not come back to us at this particular, uh, council meeting. Is, is there a reason for that? I mean, it was quite a bit of bids that, that showed up here for lawn and snow and and plumbing and electrical.
I believe Ms. Square made it clear when she received those bids that they would go out to the department heads. I don't think anything was said about returning them to us. Ms. Square?
I want to, this, when this comes in, they owe the department, the department makes a selection.
Okay.
Prove, okay, alright, okay, alright, alright, okay. I was just curious, alright. I'm good, Council President.
Madam Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll on the approval of the, uh, in person and virtual regular meeting minutes?
Councilman, Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the section of every meeting where we turn the floor over to our mayor. So she has an opportunity to address the council and the citizens. And at this point, I will yield the floor to Mayor McDonald. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you, Council President, uh, to the citizens of Highland Park and this honorable body. First, I want to apologize to those who came out on Wednesday to the coffee conversation this past Wednesday, right before we knew. Because, yeah, schedule. I was hard way in an emergency situation. I am planning to be scheduled that immediately before my time. So I apologize to those who did show up and didn't get to the council, councilations needed to happen. Obviously, some good news last week. So, it's not some good news this week, but last week, I received some good news from our fire chief. The Highland Park Fire Department is fully staffed. Before, it's a full-time fire. This is the first time that has happened since nineteen eighty-four, when we were standalone fire department before. During the time that we was a public safety, it was fully staffed. This is the first time since we had a full-time standalone fire department that we have been staffed since nineteen eighty-four. So that's good news. That means we have more fire, firefighters out for the public safety. Uh, as you know, the welfare and other citizens, all within four lines of the city. And so we glad to have that happen. So, if you see them, congratulate them, please. Third, but not least, I received a few phone calls the last week itself concerning the appointment of the treasurer. First, when we say I have no so, say so in appointing the treasurer, that, that is so, lies solely in the hands of the city council. Then we also say that those that are perpetuating the idea that I or any of my staff is blocking the appointment of the treasurer, it is false, it is a false narrative. See my resolution on March eighteen calls for the appointment to have a back, the pointy to have a background check and a bond before assuming the duties of the treasurer. Neither one of those has happened. She did finally sign a, a approval to have her background check, that was last week. So it will be completed. The bond is not complete. So until that process, and we'll say just now, uh, we did the resolution, whatever happens with that, once it is completed and signed and, uh, the council, our, our legal council, you do, everything will go forth. But until that time, she cannot take office until there's a bond. So no one has removed her from office. She is not into office, even if that goes through Jane Chapin. Miss Mr. Larson, well, both she, they get her bond. But until that time, there is documents, there is money, there is everything in that office that she cannot access. So please understand, this is not computer driven, Mr. Larson. The law says also, this is state law, bond is security. Each officer that is appointed to the city before entering any duties of his or her office and within the time described for filing an office oath, shall file the city for the bond or security required by law or, or the requirements of the council, the securities approved by the council for the due performance of duties of that person's office. The bond is security of the clerk shall be deposited with the treasurer. Also, our states, our charter states, failure to take an oath or file a bond required for the office as required by law of this charter or ordinance creates a vacant. So it creates a vacant. So if it's vacant until she does that, she cannot be in. So that's, um, and that's the only thing that has happened. Once everything is done, she can assume her duty. That's all. I hope that answers some of the people's questions that's been bothering.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, citizens. Okay, citizens' participation. Anything that is on the agenda. I'm holding the two minutes today.
To the honorable body and the citizens of Highland Park.
So one of my questions was, was answered, and I was asking, do you should receive her bond, which is no, not yet. How long do we wait for her to, or anybody, receive their bond? And then my third question is, what happens if she doesn't receive a bond? Can those questions be answered instead of waiting until the end of the meeting?
No.
No?
No.
Can be answered?
No, no, we're not talking.
Uh, no. No, this, again, we'll have an opportunity to do that. We don't wanna get off the rails. You know how this, these meetings go. They get off the rails real easy. So this is where the citizens make a comment about something that's on the agenda. And during the course of the meeting, we'll attempt to try and get that question answered for you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Good evening, council. Um, I would like to clarify some of the, uh, comments that have been made about my bonding process. Um, so, uh, in, um, uh, on the eighteenth of March, uh, when you guys, you know, appointed me to be the treasurer, you threw a number out there of two million, which, um, uh, turns out is a very high amount for people to be bonded for. The bonding companies were surprised to hear me ask for a two million dollar bond. Um, and, uh, and there was extra underwriting that had to happen. Not only that, but in order to fill out the papers, I needed information specifically from the city about other insurance that we hold, um, about, um, you know, which banks we use and how, um, uh, different, um, accounts are balanced and that sort of thing. Um, one of the bonding companies who was willing to do a two million dollar bond asked me if, um, if I could get a, you know, copy of the city's internal financial controls. And so I, I, I spent time, you know, talking to people, trying to find internal financial controls. And I ultimately found out that the city, um, does not have written policies of internal financial controls. So, um, it is not for a lack of consistent trying that I haven't been bonded. And that is also why I asked Ms. Robinson to walk on a resolution this evening, which I meant to have on the first of April, but it didn't work out that way. Um, to, uh, to lower the bond amount, um, in hope that it will lighten the underwriting requirements. Um, and also, I'm happy to report that-
Thank you, ma'am, that's your two minutes.
Okay, I'm happy to report-
Thank you, ma'am, that's your two minutes.
That-
Thank you, ma'am, that's your two minutes.
Counselor, um, Michael Bosnick, who's-
Excuse me, ma'am. The fact that you just keep talking over me is, is indicative of what? It's two minutes.
Okay.
Everyone else respects the two-minute time, but not you.
No, no, no.
How's that? No.
Not only that-
She is not the treasurer.
I'm pretty happy about that statement there.
So was our previous-
It's a real happy statement there.
For twelve million dollars. Ms. Bibbs was bonded for twelve million dollars.
That's not the records we find.
Ms. Bibbs was bonded for twelve million dollars.
Point of order. Right now, we're discussing whether she should be here in the rest of the two minutes or not. All that other conversation, we need to take place in the rest of the meeting. Her two minutes is up, that's all he's saying right now. Her two minutes is up.
Thank you, Lisa.
For, for the cops.
Thank you, Shabine.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, we have additional citizens who'd like to speak.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening, ma'am.
I understand it's a last council meeting, there was a gentleman talking about, um, over in the area of Oakman, near Hamilton, uh, some zoning issues or something like that. Is that area been rezoned? And, um, 'cause I would like to know. I've been over there for seemingly more than eight years. It wasn't nothing over there. If it's been rezoned, I should have known about it. I, I should know what's happening over in that area, because it's the area that I have my business in. So is it rezoned in that area and how they rezone and what is it rezone up to and what for?
Ms. Frye, I can send you a copy of the zoning ordinance. It hasn't changed.
I understand the zoning.
No, I'm saying I can send you a copy of it. It hasn't changed. No, ma'am.
That area has not been rezoned.
No, ma'am, I can send you a copy of it so that you can have it for your own personal wear.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Additional citizens that would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Jason Hosmer. I'm the Vice President of Rapid Response EMS. Appreciate the couple of minutes to speak tonight. Uh, my comment is on the bid opening for the ambulance services that's on the agenda for this evening. I wanted to note that there was a date error on the published RFP, um, that went out to the agencies. Uh, it was dated for due date of April twelfth by twelve noon. Uh, I came into City Hall on the eleventh, uh, with the sealed bid for our services, uh, and was instructed that the bid had closed on the Wednesday, although the published date on the RFP through the city's website and through BidNet uh, was the twelfth. So I returned the following day on the twelfth, prior to twelve noon, and was told also that the, the date, that they couldn't accept it at the city clerk's office because council had approved a, the tenth as the date, even though it was published as the twelfth. Um, so I stand here this evening with, with my sealed bid that I had brought to City Hall, um, on the eleventh. Um, like, it's looking for some direction on the date error that was published on the, the RFP. As, as early as this afternoon, it was still published as a closing date of April twelfth at twelve noon.
Okay, as I'm, as I'm listening to you, sir, I realize that this has something to do with Mr. Burgess's, uh, resolution that should have been walked on today.
Okay.
Um, it wasn't walked on the agenda. We're gonna have to take this under advisement. How we gonna handle this, though?
Have to put the bid back out.
Yeah.
Lanisum?
Okay, I appreciate the time and-
And we appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional citizens that would like to be heard?
So we're gonna be holding what we have until the-
I just wanna know if, uh, somebody-
Yes, Ms. Washington.
Can we get a complete explanation of it, or we'll do it?
You said that some of the things we're reading on the agenda, Ms. Washington?
You know, like, I read it, and I think I understand it, but I don't know about it there to me, but I think it's-
Uh, we'll do what we can to help you out with that, okay? When the time comes.
Maybe I'll remember seven and a few of the other ones. So just, I just wanted to be in layman's language so we can all understand what's going on.
Yes, ma'am. Do we have additional citizens that would like to be heard? Good evening, sir.
Hello, council, public employees and the members of the audience of Highland Park. Um, I am addressing the former item six, number six, letter G. Uh, my name is Brandon Lopez. I live on Portland. And my brother Matthew, who also lives in Highland Park, uh, we jointly as individuals own the property at forty-five Winona. Um, we are petitioning the council to sell us the lot at thirty-nine Winona, which is the lot directly, uh, to the west of it. Uh, our plans are to seek a survey, build a fence as per city ordinance as allowed, um, so that we can reduce the amount of broken glass, mostly from alcohol bottles, and the amount of people who walk and sometimes sleep in the backyard of that home. We feel that that will increase the safety and the value of the home to any families, to any property that they may be keeping on the, on the property itself, because it's on the side with the driveway. And we would hope that if there's anything you guys would like to know about our intentions with that property, that you feel free to ask during that, uh, council item, which I do not know what it is now on the agenda, but the former, but number six item or a letter G. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Hey, I see no movement towards the podium, so thank you very much for your input from the citizens, and we're gonna move directly into item five, which is the resolution approving the trust agreement amendments.
One second, uh, um, we need to discuss the, uh, the-
That, that item?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 it's just a discussion as to what we're gonna do exactly with it. I mean, I didn't know-
The floor is open.
I know some suggestions were made. And Mr. Burgess did come and speak to me about it. I was unable to print out what he sent me. For some reason, I can't print nothing out here in City Hall. It just won't work for me. So I don't know what that's all about. Uh, but we can either a, accept the sealed bid that he got now and push this back to a later date, or we can extend the bid, uh, process steel to a later date or next city council. So it's up to the board. I don't know what y'all wanna do, but he is here. He does have his bid with him. It is sealed.
Uh, council is ready to entertain a motion related to this.
No, no, it's, it's sealed. It can't be opened right now. Yeah, so, um, I'll say, okay, well then, well then, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we accept this sealed bid now and we open the bids at the next council meeting. So that we don't be without the ambulance service, 'cause then we run out of the deadline. Then we come into a problem in the city of Highland Park. We have a lot of seniors here who depend on that ambulance service, and we can't allow that timeframe to relax even for one day.
What is the name of that company again, Ms. Burgess?
Rapid, Rapid.
So, Mr. Ashafi has made a motion to accept the closed bid from Rapid Response. Have a second from-
I have a question.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilman Ashafi, second from Councilwoman Manica. Do you have a question, Madam Proton?
Yes, I do, and a statement. I think the legal way to do this is to put the bid back in the paper and then go like that, because we cannot, then we can have anybody and everybody walking in bids at any time. So it should, needs to go back into the paper. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Burgess, have we run it, I mean, Ms. Square, we run it in the timeframe issues?
Councilwoman Robinson is correct. What needs to happen is we just need to post.
Right.
We need to post that there is an extension.
Okay.
That the bid, new data has been extended to X day. That way, somebody else is out there who put a bid in, or somebody who's put it in and already make a correction. But it's okay to extend it. You just have to post it, notify, put it back, run, run an ad, put it back in. I think it takes time to run an ad. Might not be, might make, six might have to be the day.
Okay.
We have to put it back in the console, which is our official newspaper, put it back on bid, and it's had to be sent.
Okay.
Accept this bid and just tell everybody that they got the extension contractors and places it down.
So the motion that's on the floor was to accept a single bid. Are we receiving that?
So I take my motion back. Okay.
I, I resent my second.
Okay, and I make a new motion that we extend the bid process until the sixth. Put the advertisement back into the paper, accept the bid from, uh, uh, from, from Rapid, oh, Rapid Response, in which he can turn me into the clerk after we've extended the deadline, and there is the motion.
Okay, yeah.
May I speak?
Hold on a second.
So what date are you extending, accepting the bids to?
Well, Ms. Square made the date that the sixth would be the best.
No, that's when they're gonna come up to council. So I would say that Friday, not on the sixth.
It depends on how much time you need to run the ad, right? Because you need to put it back in the paper, run the ad, extend the date, get them back. Doesn't have to be a long period, but it is Councilwoman Robinson's correct. You have to notify everyone that there's been an extension.
Thank you.
So we could get it in the paper on the twenty-fourth and extend it until May third by noon.
Okay.
Friday, May third by noon.
Would they call for a specialty?
No, 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 that's just for them to turn the bids in, and then we'll bring them to you on the sixth to be opened, that we opened on the sixth.
I can accept that.
So we have a motion on the floor to extend the bid process for ambulance transportation services. Made by council? I'm sorry?
I second it.
That was, it was already seconded by Councilwoman Manica.
Well, she did.
But they took it back.
Okay, fine. So it's now, it's been seconded by Council Proton Robinson.
Very much.
So the motion is on the floor relating the bid opening. Madam, uh, Deputy Kirk, would you call the roll on this bid opening process? Uh, May sixth?
No, extended to May third at twelve noon, and it will be opened at the council meeting on Monday, May sixth.
On May sixth, okay.
Madam Deputy Kirk, if you call the roll on that, please?
Councilman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes.
We got you, Mr. Burgess.
Okay, moving on to item five now. This is the resolution approving the trust agreement amendment. City council, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the trust amendment, agreement, I mean, I'm sorry, the trust agreement?
I second with questions?
Okay, the floor is open, Mr. Ashafi. Go ahead with your question.
Ms. Square, is everything, uh-
And we've got Ron Lisk come on, uh, on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Hey, Ron, how's it going?
Hi, good evening.
All right, perfect. So, yeah, if y'all could just give us a quick rundown, we appreciate it.
So, uh, we're here. We're here, everybody. We're here. And, uh, I'm, I'm picturing myself cleaning the basement and driving to Atlanta. Remember when people used to drive to Atlanta twelve hours? Now they fly. It's too far.
Mm-hmm.
And going on vacation and living the good life now, after all these years. Not that this hasn't been a wonderful life, but, um, Glee, we all met and we went to court. The council's last approval and the GLEWA board approved it too. And, uh, and then we came, GLEWA came back with some typos and some, you know. And so we ended up going to court, and we go to court next Tuesday for the final, final, final. Uh, that's the, you know, entering the consent order and the case is over. And Ron stepped up, you know, he came in to do the revisions to the trust, and he made a few minor revisions. I'll let him talk about it, but it is now over and they can release the funds and we can start getting the meters in, because this is all about getting the meters in so that the rate goes down. So uh, we're there, and I just wanna let everybody know that you need a committee now. A committee to deal with GLEWA and all the things that you're gonna have to deal with over the next time period. So, Ron, I will let you speak.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, council president, members of council. I'm Ron Lisk with Miller Canfield. Um, so as Kathy indicated, uh, we were before you about a month ago with the settlement documents, including the revised trust agreement. Um, the council approved it at that time. Um, since then, there was just a, a couple technical corrections that were requested to be made by GLEWA um, that really turn on, uh, legal, uh, issues related to the status of GLEWA and the State, uh, Department of Treasury under the trust agreement. So what you have in front of you are just a couple changes to the definitions of both GLEWA and the Department of Treasury, um, which define them as trust beneficiaries and third-party beneficiaries under the trust agreement. Um, they're kind of idiosyncratic, uh, legal issues, um, that, uh, you know, really just capture and clarify the intent of the parties with respect to GLEWA's and the department's, uh, status under the trust agreement. Um, the second issue is just a minor technical correction to the Water Services Agreement, just renumbering a paragraph that was misnumbered. So those are the two corrections you have in front of you, and, uh, I believe, um, it's my understanding, I've spoken to both litigation counsel for the city, and they sign off on the changes, um, and counsel for GLEWA have also approved the changes. So I think we would ask the council to approve the, uh, the, the amendments to the trust agreement in front of you this evening.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. So my understanding is, with this, what we're saying is, and did I hear you correctly, Ron? You're saying that there's been minimal corrections with typos and everyone agrees and all the changes have been approved?
That's correct.
Okay, so my question is, where are we at with everything right now? Like, if I get a phone call right now from a citizen and they ask me, hey, where are we at with GLEWA and the state of Michigan and where exactly is Highland Park at? What would, what would I say to them?
So all of these settlement documents are ready to be signed. Um, essentially, what we're doing is, uh, just getting the parties together to sign everything. Um, that includes the trust agreement, uh, obviously, the city's a party to that and US Bank. And then there are two agreements with Comerica Bank, uh, the deposit account control agreement and the lockbox agreement. Um, so those have- Um, so those have been, um, approved and reviewed by all the parties, and it's really just a matter of signing things at this point.
And who, who has control of the lockbox and what is the lockbox exactly?
So the lockbox, I'm sorry. Yeah, the lockbox agreement is, um, basically you're setting up a P O box, uh, for mailed in payments, uh, from the city's, uh, customers. To, when they mail in their payments, it will go to a P O box, uh, that is automatically deposited into the Comerica account. That receives all the utility revenues. That's all.
Comerica governs that.
Yeah.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, and then I was told that meters. Are the meters going in on every lot?
Okay, well, Ron is, Ron is only in terms of the trust. So, so the agreements are, you've got a water contract, you know, how to sit down, take water and all this stuff, you know, emergency water. This, plants fall down, so you have a water contract now. You have a new sewer contract. You had a court order, consent order from Chrysler that they said was no good. You know, they beat us to death on that one. We had to, you know, fix rate. Now you have a new sewer contract. You have a trust agreement. You have an agreement with the state of Michigan now. The state of Michigan has admitted to, uh, provide the city with the money to replace all of the leaks and to repair all of the broken water mains and infrastructure in the city. And then the meters are a part of that. One of the reasons why the state got involved was because it was tired of having the city have unmetered water and sewer. So now the meter portion is gonna be master meters. Right now, the water flows into the city. They just turn it on and it blows into the city. It's unmetered. So now most cities have a meter at the main gate. Where it comes in through a main gate meter. That meter is how they bill. We don't have that. This is not the meters at your house. Your retail meters are, you know, they were replaced a few years, but now you're gonna have a master meter. And they wanna try to master sewer meter, sewer too, if we have unmetered sewer. So there's X money for that. So this is that comprehensive deal with all of the various, uh, financial commitments from the state. Two new contracts and the trust under it. So where you are now is you're not getting a levy on your house. That's gone.
Right, right.
That's what the residents, the residents wanna know, and that tax is gonna hit us. That's over. Because they have paid GLEWA now. GLEWA got twenty-five million dollars. And they're, and they got another five million dollars. GLEWA got thirty million cash. They got thirty million cash. The levy's off. No levy, you know, don't worry about that. Huge. And, uh, and that's what you're gonna tell them, the levy on, on rates. This is what people really wanna know. You know, there's that rate increase. They made, the city put the skin in the game by increasing the rates. So, yeah. This is why this settlement is important, because the longer the settlement is drug out. The more ability they have to overcharge. Because we feel we're paying about three million more than we need to pay. This is why I'm saying you need to really make sure that these meters are going in. And, you know, they're already putting in the contract, they gotta do it in a year, many years of readings and all of that. But the fact is, you gotta get the meters in, you gotta keep the committee going. And, you know, I'm gonna be retiring. I keep saying it, I'm gonna retire. And so. You've got to have this committee where you're staying aggressive. And that's why this is a good exercise tonight. You come in. From GLEWA to come back and to this old, this relationship now with GLEWA has to be a relationship that's continued. Council people, the people at the cities and the residents, that's what got it set. That's what got it set. We did all these years of fighting and doing, then the residents, then the council, you all need to give yourself a all big giant hug. Because that's how it happened. It was really this group effort pushed in the end. And, uh, and you've gotta stay on it. You gotta stay on it. So that's what the residents need to know. They need to know they don't have a levy on their houses, which was untracked. I was never gonna let that happen. And I got this way all morally, because I fought that. And, uh, and then the residents need to know that once those meters go in, you've got to stay on these meters, their bills need to go down. We know we're paying about three million more than we need to pay because it's unmetered. This is the same problem in Detroit and it's the same problem in Dearborn, all these communities are unmetered. And so those meters have got to go in, so that's a process. So like I said, folks need to attend the meeting meetings. They need to go on Zoom. They need to still participate. So that's something that if you wanna tell the residents to stay involved with this, don't just have, eh, it's over. And, uh, one thing they're waiting for is immediately. That'd be the glory days of life. And so bottom line, you gotta stay on it. And, um, and then I think you're gonna be great. Because this is a fresh, great start. And, uh, we get those rates down. That's the most important thing now, to get the meters in and get the rates down. And first of all, we need, we shouldn't be paying more than everybody. We shouldn't be paying, you know, two times more, three times more, five times more. One thing that we gotta do is stay on. And that's what you're gonna tell them. You're gonna tell them, stay involved, keep coming to council, get involved with GLEWA. And, and, and when I say get involved with them, you have to attend their bids. You can listen to them on Zoom. You have to stay involved and to make sure that your voices are heard. And, uh. And make sure they follow the law. You have to follow the law. The, the city hall is all regulated. GLEWA is not. They're just a big old water park on their own out there. Eventually they'll get regulated when enough people complain. But if you stay on it, um, and it's a twenty-year deal now. Rebuild the city in twenty years, you have money to reopen your own facilities. You own your own facility, you own your own intake. That's yours. That would not sacrifice. This council will never sacrifice. You still have your rights as a city. You didn't turn over water deposits to be run by anybody. You're still gonna run it yourself. You've got your contractor here. You don't like them, you can get none of them and find somebody else. And that has to be approved by the city. So you've got, you know, I heard Steve over there, I say that, but you know what I'm saying? You just really have to stay on this. A county council has to follow the law. Follow the law. That's how you're gonna stay straight and, uh, and, and make them follow what laws they have to follow. And, uh, and then you're gonna be great. You will.
So I, you know what, so I wanna, you talking about the master meters going at the main gates. Is there like a, um, a grid where the, the main gates would be?
There are some locations. One, one possible location is up by your water plant. That's in Detroit. That's on DuQuayner, because when the water plant was operating and it went down for any sort of repairs, you know, in its hundred-year history. Detroit would turn water on from that side and that water would flow into the city. Uh, when the plant got shut down, they opened up emergency connections. Those emergency connections are on the opposite town, side of town, which means they have to push up into the city. And so when it was, the plant is, you know, the plant is up here. So water pushes down as it's, the emergency lines are right over by the nickel, that water pushes up into the city. So there's some studies that have to be, uh, done. And, uh, Metro has a very extensive list. They have been very good. Because what they did was really get the water department back up and running from its collapse over all the years. They've been here, they worked hard, they paid a lot of ownership in what they've done. They, I'm sure they're proud of their work. But this new face is a whole different face now. And so there has to be a study, because GLEWA may want the water meter somewhere else, and, and it's all gonna be regulated by, by Eagle. And so Eagle's gonna make a lot of decisions. So this is why I'm saying you still need to stay involved. Because you don't want decisions being made, number one, outside of the law, right? Outside of the law. That's why nobody likes, because I'm the one that's gonna stand up and say, you need to follow the law. So Eagle still has to follow the law too. They have to follow that whole law. So we don't want arbitrary decisions about whether or not, you know, where are meters going, all of that. Because what we don't want is them to put meters on those emergency lines. Because the emergency lines are all corroded and old and they were never used until they shut down the plant. So when I say to stay on it. And I'm not going yet, because I have to give you proper notice so you can find another city extension though. I can't just walk out the door and, you know, I'm outta here, I'm going to wherever. Because you have to find another one. That's a requirement. The city is required to have an extension. Um, because they only have all these state loans and stuff come. And that's the reason why, because you have all kinds of loans from the state. In fact, all the debt that the city has really is to stay. It doesn't have like debt and all these bondholders and out here. Bondholders hold the bonds to stay. But the bottom line is, I think you're gonna be fine. City's gonna rebuild. You wanna be the ones rebuilding. And that really is the issue. So where those meters are gonna go, that's a good question. Because we have some studies and we know where we want them to go. We know where we think they should go, because there are places like. So coming from the place, and I, I don't know, stop talking, Ron, I don't, you know what? This has been a beautiful ten years for me. Because I have loved this work. It's been hard. And, you know, I've been beetle pawed by everybody. But it's been so rewarding. So the plant is up here, and if you notice that part of town, that's where your industry is. That's where Chrysler was, that's your whole corridor over there. So they need a lot of water pressure. That's how the town was designed. You've got everybody on that, that open corridor and all of that. And so we believe that that's the best place for meters, because it will provide the pressure that those big users need over there. That's how the system was designed. But, you know, we're at the point now where, you know, we decided to sit down and work with everybody, and so there's gonna be a lot of that on that part. Uh, about where they ultimately end up. But this council will be involved in all of that. Because all those agreements have been coming back to the council. And so that's important, because that relationship, the reason why things got so out of hand, because they never came back to the city for it. It was just nineteen ninety-six, they entered it, that grid, and next thing you know, they were suing us, you know, twenty-five years later. They never really came back. But you're gonna have much more interaction, because you're gonna see the city, the infrastructure of the city get rebuilt. And so it's just, like I said, it's, it's really a, a new day. Residents come have this on their, you know, it's a bird walking around thinking you're gonna get a, a levy. And, um, that's gone away now and folks can now, you know, move forward and, and make plans. So that's what you're gonna tell them. When they call you to ask. Now, the rates, I think the rate's high now. Because, you know, that's, that was our skin in the game to get the deal going, but those rates should go down with the installation of meters. So now it's about making sure those meters go in.
Ms. Square?
I know, I, I, I know.
Okay, I know, I know.
So anyway, um, it's a good opportunity. It's a good way to settle. It's settling. And, uh, we're gonna move on and try to make it happen.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please call a roll on item five, resolution to approve the trust agreement amendments. It was a motion made by Councilwoman Manica, second by Councilwoman Ashafi, if you would be so kind.
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Square. Thank you very much, Mr. Liskin. So now we're moving on to item six. This is the resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirements for the interim treasurer. City Council, what's your pleasure? You have, you making a motion, Ms. Manica? Yep.
I move that we continue the status quo with Mr. Lampkin as deputy treasurer in that spot. Due to the fact that Mr. Lowsky was not able to obtain or get the requirements necessary to become treasurer in a adequate time. It has been twenty-six days.
Uh, support from the chair?
Uh, I got, um.
There's a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Manica?
Discussion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Okay, so, so here's my problem here. You know. I find it interesting, as we dig and we get in, get into this. Uh, you made the statement as if it's her fault that she was unable to get these things done. No. This is clearly on the city's side of not moving fast enough to get things done in a timely fashion. But we talked about people who are supposed to be bonded, and you're telling us to keep hold of Mr. Lampkin, when Mr. Lampkin himself is not freaking bonded.
Ms. Square?
He has no bond.
Are you aware of Mr. Lampkin holding a bond of any sort?
He has no bond. He was cutting up a Genesis Fields bond and Genesis Fields is gone, and he said bond is gone.
Ms. Square, are you aware of Mr. Lampkin holding a bond?
There is no way that any underwriter would give a blanketed bond to cover any employee under any situation.
Ms. Square was?
He would have to have his own bond, but yet he's not bonded, yet he's allowed to do his job, and he's not bonded.
So the woman is telling you he's bonded, and you're telling her she's lying?
No, no, this will happen. Does not have a bond.
Okay.
Because the bond is for the treasurer and the treasurer's liable for the debt.
Okay.
That's state law. And so that bond, whoever becomes the treasurer is liable for the debt.
Ms. Manica, you might wanna consider rescinding that motion.
Okay, so my question is, how is Tony Lampkin doing his job?
So the bond.
With no bond?
The treasurer bond is for the collection of the taxes. So right now, there are no taxes being collected. The problem will kick in when it's time for the summer taxes to be collected and the winter taxes. So the bond is a bond for the collecting, for the tax collection.
Okay, but he is making deposits and bank runs, is he not?
He, right now.
He needs to be bonded for that.
Right now, people, we have, uh, Arizona missions prime policy at the city. Uh, he is collecting money for fees and things that people go permits. That's what's being generated through treasury now. Uh, and so it is not tax season, because all the delinquent taxes go down to Wayne County. Anybody, you can't, you don't have a tax bill yet. You'll get a tax bill in the summer. And then that's when the problem's gonna kick in.
Yeah, you, you know, you know, I'm just, I'm pointing out, all, all, all I'm pointing out.
They don't bond treasurer.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, they don't bond debt. They don't bond debt.
All I'm saying is, is the double standard here. Okay, he's allowed to do his job. He's allowed to handle our money. He's allowed to go to the bank and make deposits. He's allowed to do things in which the treasurer should be doing, but he's allowed to do them without a bond. That's the double standard. I'm sorry, I understand that they don't bond.
We have insurance.
Okay, so, uh, uh, so my question is, I'm not finding that insurance. I would like to see that policy.
Yeah, we have the, we have the insurance.
Okay, because I don't look everywhere for it, and I'm not finding it. Okay.
We, we used to, then.
You know what I'm saying?
When the city was self-insured, it just had to pay or it had losses. And this insurance that we have is only a million per occurrence, so it doesn't insure the entire amount. Uh, but, but the bottom line is deputies are covered, are treasurers. The difference between this situation is you are appointing a new treasurer. Or when the new treasurer is elected, one of the, one of the reasons now we know that. one of the, one of the reasons now we know that people have not run for the treasurer position here and the corner treasurer ran out of posts is because when they thought that they might run for it, they saw that there was a binding required. So you have to be in the position where you're, you can get the bond. Because you could run for treasurer, get all the way up to November, get win, and then be unable to get a bond.
Yeah, but why would somebody possibly be able to get a bond when she bonded with before?
It has.
I, I, listen, I went online and I pulled all the applications for various binding companies off online.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, we did that, Ms. Square, but,
Let her finish.
But my concern is this, Ms. Square. Who was it? Again, we keep asking this question and we're not getting anywhere. Who in the hell was it that bonded Janice Bibbs?
He had a couple companies.
Who was it? There there should be a record of that.
And listen, the treasurer,
Yes, ma'am, let's see here, Ms. Manica.
There's two binding requires. One is for Wayne County. Now, Wayne County is responsible for paying for the bond for the inflation of their taxes. Now, if the city has a bond, the city's, if it's a big bond, it will cover the summer and the winter taxes. I believe there is a bond, something on file for Janice.
So either way, I, I, okay, so here's my question.
Point of order. Ms. Manica has the floor.
Where you're saying that there's a, uh, I don't want to say words wrong. What did you say, Mr. Ashafi?
I was just told to shut up and that you had the floor.
Yeah, we, uh,
I didn't say shut up. I said Ms. Manica had the floor. No, basically is a separate word from shut up.
There is not a double standard.
It is a double standard.
She's a new person that you're appointing, right? It would be sort of like you're hired. Tell me anywhere that you're gonna go. And you're gonna appoint, hire anyone, as Ms. Kathy Square said, even elect, that cannot get bonded or has not been bonded, has not had a background check, or maybe she's getting it now, or has not fulfilled the requirements in due time.
I think what this, Wait, wait, let me, let me pause you both, let me pause you both and remind you about what's on the floor. We're on item six. There's been no motion made for item six. Let's just get that out there. We're on item six. There has been no motion made to approve. That was on the motion that Ms. Manica made about Mr. Lampkin. Now, we we're here on a resolution. So listen, and I'm bringing us back to the motion at hand.
All I'm simply saying is, you can holler in the microphone all you want. All I'm simply saying is, I feel like,
Y'all here for jokes?
I feel like it's a double standard. I feel like you're playing games with her just based on the fact that she's white. I feel like it's an act of discrimination.
Okay, okay, we're moving to, we're moving to the the resolution. The resolution is on the floor. What are we doing with this resolution, ladies and gentlemen? The resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirement. I don't hear a motion. I'll go thirty seconds. If I don't hear a motion, it dies on the floor. I don't hear a motion.
I motion to approve.
Yeah, that, that, that.
I make a motion to approve.
Our motion.
So did we ever, did we ever hear who bonded Ms. Bibbs?
Because we were listening to Mr. Ashafi and Kathy Square trying to explain to him.
So we did, I didn't hear, I did not hear anything on the amendment, this resolution regarding Mr. Larski. Ms. Manica made a motion to retain the current deputy treasurer, Mr. Larkin, in his role. It was seconded by the chair. Madam clerk, call the roll. She can. She can make the roll. She can make it. Ms. Stilarski isn't bonded. Call the roll on it, please.
What does legal have to say about this?
The motion Ms. Manica made, hold on a second, sir. The motion that Ms. Manica made was to hold, we, excuse me, I haven't, the motion that Ms. Manica made was to retain the current deputy treasurer, Mr. Tony Lampkin, in his role. And for it, that meters, Mr. Larski, and that motion, that motion came about. So Ms. Martin, she was the first person to make the motion. The motion is on the floor. It was made by Ms. Manica, was seconded by the chair to retain Mr. Larkin in his place.
I want to hear what legal has to say about it.
Call the roll on that, would you please?
I want to hear what legal has to say about it.
I I think that would technically be a motion to amend this motion, right? Because this is the motion that's on the agenda. The, uh, resolution regarding amendment of the bonding requirement for interim treasurer Lisa Stilarski. So in your motion is to amend that, to read whatever it was you indicated with respect to the deputy treasurer.
I can pull it up if you like.
And so, and it was seconded, so if, I guess that would be a motion to amend this motion. If this, if the motion to amend this fails, then you would proceed with this motion.
Thank you. So that means, Ms. Manica, your motion carries for voting because you got your motion out first. You want to go buy the book? Go buy the book.
Call the roll.
Okay. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilwoman Ashafi?
Hell, no.
Councilwoman Martin? Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council. Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion fails. Now, the floor is open for a res-
I made a motion to approve, uh, a resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirements for interim treasurer Lisa Stilarski.
Second with questions. Now, now that the floor is open. So, you know, I try to sit in this chair. I watched Annie Zobel be browbeat in this room. And everybody sat there and did nothing. I watched this man browbeat Annie Zobel in this room. And it was as silent as a church mouse, talking about racism. He browbeat that woman, he browbeat that woman and said nothing.
You really want to open up Annie Zobel?
Okay, so listen.
Because we can't open it up. I kept it quiet for a reason.
Let's do this.
I kept it quiet for a reason.
Most people don't know what's going on behind, most people don't know. No, no, I, with questions, here are my questions. Most people don't know. Most people don't know what's going on behind closed doors. The email that you see on the screen is from the city attorney who told us on March seventeenth not to vote on Mr. Larski because Mr. Larski gave Council Pro Tim Robinson a house in twenty twenty-one. Gave her a house. And then came in, the records are there. Do I need to pull up the records? How about I do that? How about I pull up the record?
Okay, didn't give her a house. She bought the damn house.
Okay, for a dollar. The city attorney came to us and said, don't act on this. Let us check this out. And these two council people to my left proceeded ahead to make this resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Larski, not bonded, came into a closed session of a city council meeting last week, sat down at the table and tried to talk as if she was a city council member.
We asked a simple thing.
She sat down and tried, so there is a clear, there is a clear indication that there is absolutely no regard to this office or for the law.
In which we,
Ms. Al Shafi says, the rules shall be followed and people shall follow the rules, but it doesn't apply when he's talking. Ms. Bibbs, no matter what you think of her, was bonded for twelve million dollars. The rules will be followed and everyone will follow the rules. It's been over a month. It's been over a month. It's been over a month. And yet, there has been no bond produced.
Yeah, come on with it.
There has been no bond produced.
Okay, I can't wait to get to that one.
So the fact that we are doing this, that we're asking that the rules be changed for Mr. Larski, that the rules be changed for Mr. Larski, that she should somehow get a lower bond than the old black lady. So, so, yeah, so Ms. Bibbs had to have a twelve million, this man is screaming racism. This man is screaming racism on the record and saying that we, that this city council who's following the rules, this city council is following the rules and we're following the law. And for someone to say that we have a double standard,
Hundred eighty thousand dollars from you and has yet to pay it back.
The woman doesn't owe any money. She, she paid her money.
The city, she owns the city ninety thousand dollars. She owes the bondy agency, she's the other half, another ninety thousand dollars.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I'll be back when the dust settles in here.
With all due respect, ma'am, I'm finished. Okay, so the issue at hand is, we're voting on this resolution as a two set of rules. There's the rules that apply to everyone else, and now there's a special set of rules that apply to Mr. Larski. So you don't know what happens behind the scenes. This email that you see on the screen?
You don't know what happens behind the scenes.
Sure I don't. Sure I don't.
Okay, I know you don't.
So,
So here's,
Go ahead, Ms. Ms., uh,
Here's my other question. It's a double standard.
Absolutely.
According to Mr. Ashafi, but all I hear, Mr. Ashafi, is you saying, we, so that means that city council or you, and I don't know who else is in that, we, has been trying to help her get her bond. So that means that we supposed to help everybody who comes along to get their bond. We've been helping others try to get their bond or we say, can you get your bond and find out if they get their bond?
Ms. Square?
Did not the city pay for Janice Bibbs' bond? Did not they pay for their bond?
They paid for everybody's bond.
Did not, hold on a second, hold on a second, hold on a second. Did not the city pay for the bond? Did not the city help her find the body that you see to bond her and pay for their bond? Yes or no?
It's not a yes or no answer.
Okay, so please explain to us. Since all of a sudden, it's a problem helping somebody around here.
It's not, it's not a problem. It's not a problem because when you get a bond, it's insurance. So you get an insurance agent. And the insurance agent will contact the city for any of the information they need from the city. It's just like getting credit. Like you apply for a credit card or something. The credit company gets your credit, decides what you're gonna get. It's the same, it's the same thing. Uh, you know, I was not, Janice Bibbs as treasurer was elected, just like you're elected. You have discretion as elected a person. Nobody tells you how to vote. Nobody tells you how to do your job. Jan was elected as a treasurer. He had a responsibility of treasurer to get a bond. Now, it looks like, and I'm, and I, and I don't even want to say this because I'd like to have documents in front of me. I know that there is a bond on file. It doesn't, isn't enough? Do you get a discount because you've been in the office for a long time? You get a discount because you have experience, you know? You get a discount because of the amount fluctuates every year. You get a discount because you're in the Wayne County pool. You know, they're, just like the mayor. The mayor is elected, the mayor has discretion. The mayor can run things as she sees fit. So I can't speak on all of the things that Janice was able to do in her capacity, um, being the treasurer. But I can say this, state law, state law requires, and the bond is for the tax collector. So they steal your permit money. That's why you have insurance. They see somebody's in that office or whoever's collecting the money. It used to be the city had all kind of locations where people collected money. Now you're so small, you're down into one place, the water department, they have their insurance for people collecting money. Bottom line is, this is a new person. You haven't had a new treasurer in decades. In decades. When she was the deputy treasurer, under the treasurer who was here years ago, that she was under that bond, but she was required to get a bond every year for the city's portion and for the county's portion. The county takes it one step further because the county gives you a receipt back. And the county pays for their bond and they get it back out of chargebacks. And what I've been doing over the last month is reading the laws because it's not common knowledge. In fact, it's, it's not even that easy to understand, but they're trying to get a bond. This is a personal bond. This is not a city bond. This is a bond that would be in the person's name. So when Lisa goes to get her bond, she gets the bond amount. That bond will cover the debt. It has to cover the debt because the deputy does not get a bond on their own. The deputy, the treasurer is liable for the, for the deputy. And so the real issue is, you know, you fill out the application and you turn it into the insurance company and then the insurance agent works with the city attorney's office to collect up all the information. Because it's a lot of information that you gotta collect. You gotta know, you know, uh, how much money did the city collect? How much did the county, and the county's taxes, Wayne County, the state, and the school district, and that's in the winter. And that, you have to have your bond on file with them by December because that tax bill goes out in December and it's due in February. So this is, listen, I understand the frustration because it's complicated. It's complicated for a new person who has not been a treasurer. That's the problem. There is the Michigan Treasurers Association that I would suggest this Stilarski reach out to. Because some of the treasurers in Michigan are appointed, some are elected, some are elected without having, have any experience. And and those townships, things that are required to have a deputy, because the deputy has experience. The thing about Tony Lampkin is, he's not bonded because he would have been under Janice's bond and she's now bonded. So whatever bond she has on file or whatever amount, you know, you can say, like, you know, maybe he's not on the real expires. But the fact is, she's gone and it was in her name. So this is a, this is new for the city, for starting fresh. I don't think anybody's discriminating against, but that's a personal feeling of the way you feel about how you've been treated. But the fact is, you have to get an agent. And the agent does the diligence to get the information of the city. The city cannot give an applicant or an appointed person bank information. They're not gonna give them documents from the city. They're not gonna give them that stuff. They have, they're gonna give it to the agent though. But I think it'll all work out. You just gotta go and try to get the bond. And now what happens, one of the questions was, what happens if this all falls apart? The Wayne County, the Wayne County treasurer will be your treasurer until you elect a treasurer. And so this isn't gonna go away anytime soon because we're gonna go into an election. So the next person is gonna have the same prime. And, um, and so that, that's, that's the problem that I see. I, I think it's all blown out of proportion. I think we're gonna get through it. We have time for Ms. Stilarski to try to get the bond up until the deadline for the summer taxes. Because the bond isn't necessarily for stealing permit money, it's to be able to collect the taxes. You have to have them. So I think it's gonna work out when you just, you know.
So we got a motion on the floor that was made by Ms. Al Shafi, the chair seconded. You can vote on this resolution right now unless there are additional questions.
No, wait, we have additional questions.
Okay, go right ahead.
So first, let me say this. I personally talked to Mr. Larski and said that I felt that she was better suited in a lot of other places in the city, in the city. When I say in the city, I mean here, working at the city. She doesn't have any treasurer experience. We would have to send her to training or let her go to training or teach her. And there's some areas that I think she really needs to understand that falls under the treasurer and some that does not fall under treasurer. There's also my question here, that these things that need to be changed on this resolution and five thousand dollars. I'm not sure, from two million, which is what Ms. Mr. Ashafi, you guys came up with this, the very first resolution, if I'm correct, and put in the two million dollars. Now you want us to go all the way to five thousand dollars?
It's not five thousand.
Five hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Five hundred thousand. And I'm not sure what five hundred thou, just hear me out, what five hundred thousand would actually cover in regards to a city. So I don't know if we're actually thinking, or is this what, this the amount that you've already found out that she can get bonded for? Or you assuming that she can't get bonded for eight million, twelve million? Because I'm sure if everybody bring their taxes in, it's gonna be over five hundred thousand dollars. So again, are we bonding her for this amount? And then, next thing, if we bond her, she becomes the treasurer, just interim. Then we're gonna have to turn around again, say she doesn't get an electoral. She chooses not to. Or say, I don't know, somebody else, because there are some people in Hana Park that actually already work in this kind of capacity and have some bonds. They just have their reasons for not applying. Later, they may want to be elected. They might not want to deal with this council situation. Later, they may want to be elected. They might not want to deal with this council situation. Is why they did not come forward. But my questions are purely based on factual information that I'm looking at and things that I know. As well as I know for a fact that Ms. Stalarsky knows. She's aware, she's aware of what I said, how I feel. And that this should not be happening. I don't care where you go and what other city. They would not even be having this conversation. Because once you could not fulfill the requirements, there would be a move on. Or we just go ahead and let Wayne County be the treasurer until we can get an election. And if she, if she has plenty of time then, she want to run for election, so I mean, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Last but not least, if there's any discretion. Any discretion that one of us should not be voting. I would suggest that we don't vote. Because it is the, and I mean, let's, let me get a good word for this. If it don't look right, you probably should not vote.
So, so, uh, Ms. Manica, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm simply going to say this here. To make the statement, I think you'd be better fitted somewhere else. That sounds vaguely familiar to me. Uh, y- you better off i- in the field, boy, than over here in this house.
Stop, stop, quit doing that.
That's what it sounds like to me.
Stop, we going way in there.
Okay.
The effects are on the table.
Okay, I don't like the statement. The bottom line is, the bottom line, the, hold on a second, Ms. Manica. All I'm simply saying, I, I didn't cut you off when you were talking, Ms. Manica. I didn't cut you off. I didn't cut you off. You, you just made assumptions about what I was saying just a second ago. What are you talking about?
I didn't express my fault.
Okay then, so allow me to express mine. Bottom line. You made the assumption that she can't get bonded. From what I'm finding out, it's not her that's holding up the process. It's the city and the attorneys that's actually holding up the process. And furthermore, I reached out to Mr. Eric Sabree. He sent other, uh, he sent us a list of every treasurer in which Wayne County has bonded since two thousand and nineteen. Janice Beers was not on that list. Explain that one to me.
Have you asked it me?
She was not on that list. All I'm simply saying is, you're telling me that a bond existed. All I'm simply saying is, you're telling me that a bond existed for somebody.
I did not tell you that.
May I finish speaking?
Yes, you may.
You're telling me that a bond existed for Janice Beers, which I have yet to find. Nobody can provide it for me. Nobody can give it to me. Hell, you can't even tell me who the binding agency was. Nobody knows nothing. As usual, it's always the same in this city. Nobody knows nothing when the question is that. Everybody's, uh, uh, uh. Nobody knows nothing. Everybody's speechless. But the moment you're trying to cram some crap down our throats, you got plenty to say then. And I got a problem with that.
So are you talking to me?
I'm talking to everybody.
Okay, so, and we go.
The moment y'all got something that y'all trying to jam down our throats, you got plenty of answers for me then.
So we have, we're going to move, we've moved way off the order, so we're going to go back to the resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirement.
When I ask a question, when I ask a question about the bond.
Sorry, Madam Proton.
Nobody's got an answer for it.
Ms. Al Shafi, somebody else would like to speak. Madam Proton?
I was going to wait until council affairs to clear the air. I own a house at eighty Louise that I purchased from the Stomlovskis and Brian Donovan. Because before COVID, it started out as a project for us because we attended small development class. So when COVID hit, I, they deducted my sweat equity. And I purchased that house, which is nobody's business. Okay, that is nobody's business. So there's emails that circling around.
And what year was that?
No, it, it, it's nothing. It means nothing. It means nothing. Only because Brian Donovan sat on the assessors board. And I was inquiring some questions about different, like my garage just tore down. I said, is my taxes going to be different? Questions that I asked, so they took back my personal information and gave it to whoever. So now that's where that, that email came from. I own my house on eighty Louise. They didn't give me anything. I know I don't, but I did. So now we can call for the vote.
Let's go ahead. Madam Deputy, wait, Ms. Martin?
No, I got some questions. I got some questions.
Go ahead.
First question is, what's really the concern about her being bonded?
They don't know who the hell was doing the bond?
No, 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 we heard you. Wait, we heard you. What's concern about her being bonded? What's the concern and the holdup? I don't understand.
It's insurance, ma'am. That's what it is. It's insurance.
I heard that. I heard that, Mr. President.
I'm just saying it.
Anybody who can answer that question?
Ms. Martin, I will attempt, I will attempt to, but I will not promise you that I'll do a good job. Okay, so it's insurance. If you get a vehicle for forty thousand dollars, you have to get a full coverage policy that covers that vehicle if it's damaged for up to forty thousand dollars. The role that she's accepting, she has to have insurance coverage for errors, for theft. That is equivalent to the amount of money that she's handling. That's what bonding is for. It's not like a criminal bond. Like if you, if you're running from the law. And they, you're bonded, you have to put up a certain amount of money to keep from running. If you run, the bail bondsman will come and get you. No, this is, this is a different framework. And again, my explanation is framed by my limited knowledge of it. But the bonding insurance is just that, it is insurance. The bonding agency goes after the person that they bond.
So that's its purpose. What's the concern?
Uh, I don't know what the, because all I know is that she just can't get one.
Okay, right. Okay.
It's called stalking. It's called stalking. That's what it is.
Hold on.
Who stalks?
What's the next step?
The county will come in and manage our, our treasury needs, ma'am. That's where we are right now.
Because there's a holdback, because we're holding it back. As a whole, right?
I don't know that we're holding anything.
Oh, you definitely hold it.
So why aren't we moving forward if we're not holding anything back?
She hasn't received a bond, and I don't recall anybody saying she had a background check.
Correct.
Did you get a background check yet?
So I.
That was a yes or no question, ma'am.
I filled out the form last week for background check. I filled out forms almost a month ago, um, for HR. And I thought that I left background check form at that time. I filled out many, many, many ones. Um, however, it was just last week that HR brought to me the background check. Um, and so now they are still doing the background check.
Okay, thank you.
And that was, that was thirty days ago.
They stole.
Yes, no? Yes, no, yes?
They stole.
He just did the bond.
No, 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 it was, we're talking about the background check. She said it was twenty-six days ago.
I said, no, she just did it last week.
She just said HR just gave it to her last week, but they waited twenty-six days to tell her about it. They waited twenty-six days to tell her about it.
No, she said she did it last week. She said.
She said she just did it last week. I, I clearly said, hey, listen to it. She said she just did it last week, but she didn't know about it until last week because HR didn't tell her for twenty-six days.
Now, my question, next question.
These are the, uh, the minutes from the meeting that we had. And at that meeting, it was made clear on that day.
Gave you, there's the list of.
That you were supposed to do this.
That Wayne County bonds and Mrs. Janice Beers is not on it.
Okay, but we're. A bond, a bond company. And Eric Sabree supplied that.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so let's get information on where she can get bonded. Now, Ms. Square, my question to you is, you would, um, what did you say? You said something about, um, oh, training. Right? Treasurer training or treasurer?
Yeah, I think that, uh.
What would that do if she gets training? Would that help her get bonded? Would that help us move forward as a city? Or you're talking about waiting until next election? Why would we do that?
No, no, what I, what I said is that there is a treasurer's association in Michigan.
Right, okay, treasurer association.
This is, you know, a job, you got to apply to a job. And, um, that's a place to reach out for information because there are all types of treasures in Michigan. Some are elected, some are appointed, some are just bigger heads.
Right, right. No, I, I got you. You're, you're going on repeat. My question to you is, you talked about the treasurer's association. She can do that once she's bonded, correct?
Once she's bonded, she's got the job.
No, I got that. I got that. She can still go to the treasurer's association when she get bonded, yes? No?
Once she's bonded, she can do whatever she wants.
So that's a yes?
She can learn the job on the job.
So that's a, that's it? That's a yes? So my next question, the treasurer's association right now would do what?
That's where all the treasurers go and be here and talk about their job. They're some fucking bonded because they're already bonded. This is where they go learn how to do their, this job is a hard job. You gotta compute the taxes, you gotta collect the taxes, you gotta, it's an actual skill set.
Right, I got that. I remember you said that. I got, I heard, I heard everything you said. My question right now, but we're talking about being, her being bonded, right? And the treasurer's association, that's not, it's just a bunch of treasurers that are bonded, not bonded, certified, not certified, appointed, not appointed. So she would just go there and just get information?
It's a professional organization. We can't help, but we're not treasurers.
We can't or we're not going to?
We can't. I don't have the, I don't know the information. You don't know the information.
Right, that's why I'm asking. Right, that's why I'm asking.
What I'm saying is, that's a resource. But she can learn the job.
That doesn't make sense.
That, that's how, that's how Highland Park is set up. Anybody can run. If they can get a bond, they can take off and learn the job.
Right, but we, we really need to stop, see, this is the thing about Highland Park. We need to stop doing business as usual because it's getting us nowhere.
But that's in the statute, that's a charter.
It's getting us nowhere. It's getting us nowhere.
Anybody can run, get the bond, and learn the job when you get it.
Right, but you say anybody can get the bond, but clearly nobody. It, it, anybody can't get the bond. That's not true.
Well, you have to try if you run.
We, have you been trying? Okay.
And when did you apply? No, it, it isn't that simple though.
Most treasurers have backgrounds in finance, they come from banking, they, it's a skill set. It's a skill set. I couldn't be a vet if I didn't have any medical knowledge.
Kathy Square just said that she will learn it on the job.
Yes, ma'am.
So you said it's a skill set for her to get bonded?
I'm just saying, most treasurers have a background in accounting or finance. They go get professional training. They come out of college with those degrees. And they decide, you know what, I've been working for Goldman Sachs, I'll become a treasurer in my community. I've been working for Lehman Brothers. It's one of those things where bank computations, you don't learn that. You don't learn that a- at, at the community college. You just don't.
Agreed.
So are you guys ready to vote on this? Let's go ahead.
Nobody's stalling her.
Oh, you definitely stalling her.
Nobody's stalling her. I don't have.
She has to get her own bond.
Get her own bond. She has to do her own background check. She knew she had the.
For people, for people, for people to have so much to say. For people to have so much to say, y'all don't know nothing about nothing, and nobody has produced a bond for anybody in this damn city.
It's so important for Mr. Lopson.
Show me a bond from anybody and I'll shut up.
That's right.
Show me, show me a bond for someone.
Madam Clerk, um, we have moved off the order at hand, and I'm calling for the vote. On the resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirement for interim treasurer, Lisa Stalarsky, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin? What are we voting on?
This is the resolution regarding the amendment of the bonding requirements for interim treasurer Lisa Stalarsky.
So we're cha- to change it from two million to five hundred thousand?
Yeah. It's full of errors, but we, we're voting on it. We're voting on it.
So yes on the changes? Yes on the changes? But yes on the changes?
Yes on the changes.
Okay. So ma'am, I, just, just, the Deputy Clerk wanted clarification. Are you voting on the?
Changes.
The resolution, or you, this is the resolution to amend the bond requirement?
Yes, to amend the bond requirement.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for the clarification. So.
Ms. Manica?
No.
Council Proton Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
No. Motion carries. Your baby. All right, move on. Moving on to item seven of the administration, this is the resolution to approve the location agreement between DTE kiosk. Bill payment system between the city of Highland Park and DTE. City Council, what is your pleasure? Item seven.
I want to make a motion to a resolution to approve location agreement, DT kiosk bill payment system between the city of Highland Park. And DTE.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, Ms. Martin. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Martin to approve the resolution related to the location agreement between DTE and the city of Highland Park. Do we have support?
I support with questions.
I have support from Council Proton Robinson. Your questions, ma'am?
Who decided on this location? Can someone answer that? Because I went to the police station on several occasions, we couldn't get in. So why wasn't it put inside?
Direct center, direct center.
Direct center or another department. Thank you. Who decided on this?
Right.
Chief, anybody?
Yeah, the recs are open more than the police department.
So when DTE can, uh, reached out to us about setting up a payment, uh, location in the city. They requested that location because that's where hopefully we move all of our operations for the police department. Now, speaking on times that you can't get in, that is not a fully manned twenty-four hour building at this moment. We are still operating out of one four one one two Woodward as our primary police department for patrol services. That's an administrative building and detective bureau and thirtieth district court three days a week between specific hours.
So when they installed it, you said it's going to be fully manned, chief?
No, I did not.
But you just said that it's not fully manned because I, because when I ring the door, I can't get in because it's not fully manned. But then again, you just said it's going to be there, so is it going to be fully manned when the, when the kiosks get there?
No, it won't.
So I'm not understanding, I really don't understand now.
So the intention is in the future to be fully manned. However, we're not there yet. But the unit will be there, and DT will list the specific hours in which we are operating.
And then those specific hours, you will make sure that you have someone there?
Correct.
That's all I needed to know, chief. Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, we have item seven, a resolution to approve the location agreement between DTE and the city of Highland Park. City Council, what's your pleasure on this? We have a motion made by Ms. Martin, supported by Councilwoman Robinson. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call to roll on item seven?
Councilwoman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, so our citizens will not have a kiosk to pay their bill.
Not right now.
DTE offered to put it in themselves. That's great. So they gotta go downtown and put it in the mail.
Where they been going until we get it in?
Under item eight, under the community development, item eight A is a resolution petitioning for the vacation of the public street and alley at two seven four West Grand.
I move to approve the resolution petitioning for the vacation of the public street and alleyways for two seven four West Grand.
Have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution from Councilwoman Manica. Chair offer support. Don't hear any questions? Pull this up on the map.
It was the last greenhouse, everybody.
Seven four. Hey, sorry, haven't eaten. Just want you to see it before we vote on it. Ms. Manica? Two seven four, West Grand, talking about vacating this alley.
So I got a question.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so, so we're talking about the greenhouse that they just threw down. Which was the last holdout. They want us to vacate that street. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, a facility that has still not had a dent in, but y'all wiped out an entire neighborhood for it. Lovely. Makes me feel all warm.
I believe those people sold their property.
Can I get an amen?
Makes me feel all warm, but it's been sitting there for a year, for, for what? How many years now has it been empty?
Okay, so the previous administration and the previous city council. Do the proper paperwork for whatever reason, and they didn't vacate this alley. And now this city council has an opportunity to correct that so that the paperwork is done properly. There's a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica, supported by the chair.
That's not true. That's not true. It was a holdout. Everybody know what it was. It was a holdout.
Thank you very much for that. I wasn't exactly sure based on it. So I stand corrected. This was the greenhouse. This was the gr, this was the greenhouse, okay. It was impossible for us to do this then.
That's right.
It was impossible for us to do, so now we can, the house has been sold, the family has been compensated. It's, it needs to be vacated for it to properly, uh, fit in alignment with what Ashley Capital was doing over there. Am I correct in my statement? Okay, so we have an opportunity to make that right. Any additional questions on item eight A? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the resolution petitioning for the vacation of the public alley, public street and alleyways of two seven four West Grand?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on, thank you sir, thank for the clarification. Under community development, moving on to item B, resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at one two eight Chandler to the adjacent property owner at one three two Chandler, Mr. Kevin Jones for five hundred dollars. City Council, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the sale of the lot.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tim Robinson, do we have support?
Kevin Jones.
Is he still here?
Yes.
Support from the chair.
Which one? Which one are we looking at?
This is at one two, one two eight Chandler. Uh, Madam Deputy Kirk, go ahead and call the roll on item eight B.
I got some questions.
I didn't see your hand.
I got some questions. Uh, if Mr. Jones can answer those for us?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, uh, so Mr. Jones, you, you list here as a resident, but your ID says Shelby Township.
Yes, that's what I did, I owned the property at one thirty-two.
Okay, so that's not a resident.
I got a question.
So now a resident. Um, what are your plans for this particular lot?
I, uh, I submitted the one that was direct behind camera to the swing next door to the property.
A what?
Swing set.
Swing.
No, okay. Swing set?
It's Ms. Martin?
Yeah. Did you give my message?
Yes, I talked to you.
You said you talked to me?
Um, talked to a young lady named
I'll say you didn't talk to me because I have, I left you a message. We didn't talk, okay. So it says here you're a resident.
No, I'm not a resident anymore.
You're not a resident anymore. How long have you not been a resident?
Um, so.
There's, there's no requirement for residency for adjacent lots.
It says it's a resident. What does that say?
Doesn't it say it right here on purchase information? Am I a resident? Yes.
Says resident nonprofit organization, for-profit organization developer or non-resident.
So, my question to you is, in the purchaser, which would you, what would you acquire that you are? You're not a resident.
I'm not a resident anymore.
Okay, so it would be a non-resident or nonprofit or developer?
Non-resident, so.
Non-resident. Okay, so, non-resident. Okay, and so you want to do, build a swing?
Yeah, just put a swing.
And maybe, did I read that? Maybe, you're correct?
Maybe a garage.
You're not sure, you're not sure. First the swing and then you might decide a garage, okay.
Put the cement up behind the house, that would cost enough.
When did you decide, when did you, uh?
I'll be honest with you, I never knew that I could purchase, um, lots. I, I thought it was all done by, um, some other, um, bank that was just had their name on all the properties in our property.
So is this your first lot?
Yeah, this is actually my first lot.
First lot?
I own two houses. I lived in one up until two thousand and ten.
And then on that lot, you want to do a swing set and maybe a garage?
Maybe. But I maintain all three of those lots surrounded that.
You might do what?
I maintain the property and cut the grass on all three of those lots. I'm sitting back in the middle of three, three lots.
How soon are you planning to get started on the swing set and maybe the garage?
Um, I don't know. I, I'll find, I'll get my taxes back and then we start.
You said when you get the taxes?
Um, about May or June.
May or June?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. And how long will you think that would take you, if you get started in May or June?
I don't know, ask me how long it takes to. So you say, oh, I don't know.
Have you been pricing a swing set?
No, I haven't. On the grand kids.
You're grand kids?
Yeah.
Do you stay in the house next door?
No, I got a cousin living in now, but my daughter might move into the house if she has two kids.
Isn't it?
Yeah, I have, I have a fence on, on one side of the front, I mean, we're standing.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
So, um, the fact that you're here says values. We appreciate that. Uh, I, I would just ask, in which I try to tell everybody is if this council does approve you, I ask that you keep your word, clean up the property, fence it in, do what you said you're gonna do with it.
I do that, no, I just fence it in.
Okay.
Yeah, but my thing is, what proof do we have that that's even gonna happen? Like, there's no schedule, there's no...
Mr. Jones, how long you been taking care of them lots?
I had the house since oh eight.
So you've been taking care of them lots, basically. It's, it's in the middle of your, okay.
All, all three of those lots I've been taking.
Yes ma'am, yes sir, okay. Any additional questions? Madam Deputy Kirk, would you call the roll on item eight B, the resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at one twenty-four Chandler to the adjacent property owner at one thirty-two Chandler, Mr. Kevin Jones, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Who moved it again, I'm sorry?
It was moved by Council Pro Tim Robinson, supported by the chair.
Okay. Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to item C, resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at three four seven Elmhurst to Anthony Toon, the adjacent property owner at three five three Elmhurst for five hundred dollars. Ms. Toon?
Yes.
We, um, the chair is open to hear a motion on item eight C?
I make a motion to sell.
We have a motion on the floor by Council Pro Tim Robinson, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Martin, do we have any question or discussions, or can we move to the vote?
No, I got a question.
Please go right ahead, Ms. Martin.
No, no, go ahead, Ms. Martin, I'm sorry.
Um, I saw that property was nice. You're right, it was one of the best ones on the lot. Um, so true.
I disagree. No.
No.
It, it was a lovely house.
Do you, yeah. Do you have a, you, you currently, because you're using it to, uh, rent, correct?
Um, yeah, yes, I'm using that.
Yeah, next to.
But I'm using a lot for a parking lot.
Right, parking lot, you said, uh, what else? And so I'm gonna ask you the same thing I asked, when do you plan to get started with that?
It's already, I got gravel there already, where they actually park, their cars.
Alright, and how long do you think that's gonna take you?
It's already in motion.
Six months, five months, a year?
It's pretty much done, to be honest with you.
Okay, but you haven't started yet. You're putting things in motion, but you have.
There's gravel there already.
Okay.
You know, I don't know how many, put cement there on, but we'll grab it. It's just a matter, you know, make it look really nice. You stop parking, right?
Yeah, I, well, what I saw was, I saw the house, I saw the net lot next to it, and I see that there's cars. Instead of parking on the street, they're parking in that actual lot. There's no more grass there or anything like that.
Right.
So yeah, I saw that.
That's the gravel.
Okay.
Yes.
So you're not laying cement?
I don't think I'm gonna listen.
More gravel though.
Just to you, Ms. Ma'am.
Are you gonna, Ms. Martin?
I don't know.
So, did you get a permit?
Uh, there was no permit prior to, I talked to the city council, not city council, uh, member, he said.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I had to talk to the, uh, building inspector. Building inspector, and he said, the only thing I just use, uh, T one eleven, uh, gravel, that will be fine.
So you're gonna just stick the gravel down?
I don't.
Because if you do cement, then you gotta.
Then I gotta have a permit, right. So it's probably just gonna be more gravel, if in fact the gravel washes away.
So, um, I got a question. Um, Mr. Toon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I understand the way that things used to be done, okay, with the previous council. You know, they allow people to occupy the land to, uh, you, let, let me ask you an honest question. How long have you occupied that land before you decide to come here to council and ask for purchasing?
I only occupied it for about six months.
Okay.
But I've been taking care of it.
Right.
Two thousand and five.
Okay, okay, okay. So, so the reason I say that is, okay, I don't want to get into a habit. And I'm not telling you no, I'm just saying, I don't want to get into a habit of people squatting on city land, and then something happens to you on that land, the city is responsible for it. You know what I'm saying? We have a bunch of situations like that right now, that in the city that have gone on for years. Eight years, nine years, ten years, people have been using a land that's not theirs, occupying it, and now all of a sudden, after eight, nine, ten years, they want to purchase it, okay? But all of that time, they put the city in liability, because if anything happened to them on their land, it's our problem. We're responsible. Right, we're responsible for it.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So, I want to put out that to every resident. I appreciate the fact that you maintain the land, you cut it, that's fine, okay? But don't operate on it, don't be on it, don't be living on it until you've actually purchased it, because if something happens to you, we're responsible for it.
Right.
Okay, and we don't have the money to pay. Okay, I was like, I see people, they're putting up, uh, putting up solar lights with no questions asked. If, if, if that light falls on somebody or falls on their car, who's at fault?
The city's at fault, exactly.
See what I'm saying?
I understand.
Okay, so, in the future, if you have something that's next to you, that you want to cut and maintain, that's fine, but don't use the land, don't occupy it until you actually own it.
Very much.
Okay?
Okay, alright.
Madam Deputy Kirk, do you want to call the, uh, roll on item eight C, resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at three forty-seven Elmhurst to the adjacent property owner at three fifty-three Elmhurst? If you would call the roll on that?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item D, resolution, thank you sir, you got a lot today. Uh, resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at four hundred Highland to Bees R E L L C, a Florida limited liability company, adjacent property owner at three ninety-six Highland for five hundred dollars. City Council, what's your pleasure?
Didn't we own this property?
Winona?
Yeah.
We're not on Winona.
No, 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 no.
Our island, right.
Yeah, Highland. Didn't we own that property?
We did, we did, we did.
It was on your agenda last year.
That's right, now I remember this.
We did.
Okay.
City Council, what's your pleasure?
I didn't get no answers.
I, I vote, uh, I make a motion to deny this application.
On what grounds?
Uh, the same, the same reason as last time. Uh, one, I don't think the young man, is he here?
No.
Okay, okay, well, hold a second then. I take that motion back then, that allows us to, to do some discussion.
So we don't have a motion on the floor yet?
Okay, well, somebody can make it.
It's item D, the resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at four hundred Highland to Bees R E L L C, the adjacent property owner at three ninety-six Highland. City Council, what's your pleasure? Gentlemen are standing in front of us, are we not going to, this, this motion gonna die on the floor?
Did somebody make a motion?
No one has made a motion as of yet.
I make a motion to sell the lot.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Pro Tim Robinson to sell the adjacent lot to the, uh, four hundred Highland to the adjacent property owner who owns three ninety-six Highland. Chair offer support. Madam Pro Tim, what are your questions?
Mr. Reed, are you?
Yes, I am.
So, do you actually live in, um, in the house?
Yes, I live there.
You do?
Yes, ma'am.
And from this paperwork, you said you was gonna just fence it in?
That's correct.
Alright. No further questions.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah, so, how long have you been living there?
Since like October last year.
You, did you get my message? I just called.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were both called.
Um, so your ID right here says Florida.
Correct.
And you've been living here how long?
Living here like a year.
So you never got a Michigan ID?
No.
Why is that?
Because I still have my LLC in Florida.
Okay, and then you want to, let me ask you this question. It says that, um, right here in our packet, you want to return density for ducking.
Correct.
What's your understanding of for ducking in the lot that you want to purchase?
I just want to fence it in and make it look good.
You know, everybody said that. Everybody said that to not fence it in. We get a lot of that. Have you been taking care of that lot right now?
Yes.
Okay, what you been doing to it?
It has needed to be cut because it's cold, so it's not really, it's picking up trash. Because the grass hasn't grown, it's cold.
Okay, and you want to fence it in to do what?
This is a helpful lot.
Okay, and how soon do you plan to get started with that?
Uh, probably like, when the money get right, like, three months.
When you get right in three months? How long do you feel like that's gonna start?
Get it fenced in?
Correct. After you get your money.
Three months.
Oh, the whole time? I'm confused. Have you looked at fencing at all?
No, I have not.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Manica, Ms. Manica, forgive me.
I'm sorry, who is, I'm sorry, what's your name?
William Reed.
Who's Ethel?
I have no idea. I believe that's the person that bought the house from.
That was my end, I, I was trying to figure out who's Ethel.
Okay, uh, Mr. Reed, I just want to get some clarification from you. A lot of people in Michigan split their residence. I would say hundred thousand, two hundred thousand people in Michigan split their residence between Michigan and Florida. Um, would you assume that you're gonna spend fifty percent of your, at least fifty percent of your time here?
Yes, more than that.
Okay, okay. Are you originally from Michigan or Florida?
Florida.
Okay, so you're a Florida resident and now you've moved to Michigan. You've done the opposite. Most people in Michigan move down to Florida.
Everybody tells me that.
Yeah, they do, they do. I know quite a few people who split their residence at least fifty percent of the time between Michigan and Florida. It's not uncommon. Especially with people who are north of fifty, so it's a very common thing. Uh, I don't have any additional questions, Madam Pro Tim, would you go ahead and call the roll for this gentleman? Uh, I don't have any additional questions, Madam Proton, would you go ahead and call the roll for this gentleman? This is on the resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at four hundred Highland.
Madam Clerk can call it.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. When you get up at four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, the day is long, Madam Deputy Kirk, would you please go ahead?
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Say it.
Councilman.
Okay.
Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica.
I'm sorry?
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion fails, sorry, sir.
Alright.
And yeah, I do get up at four thirty, five o'clock every morning. Moving on to, this is for the Snickers, uh, moving on to the next one, resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at two twenty Midland. To Ms. Sherrell Buchanan Johnson, the adjacent property owner at two one six Midland, is Ms. Buchanan Johnson here? Hi, ma'am, thank you very much, okay, so, well, at this point, the chair, we entertain a motion.
I make a motion to sell.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Proton Robinson, we have a second.
Support with questions.
Support from Councilman Ashafi, your question, sir?
Uh, hey, how are you? How you doing today? Uh, if my memory serves me right, we just gave you a lot, didn't we? About a month or two ago, right?
No, no, well.
Six? Has it been that long? Damn, I'm getting old. Oh, oh, have mercy, I was thinking it was a, a couple of months, yeah, it was last year. Okay, um, what have you done with that particular lot, ma'am?
Wow, you would be amazed, I, I'm, I've spent five. Thousand bucks, um, getting three lot, lots, um, chopped down. Uh, two twenty, two twenty-two, and two twenty-six.
Okay, have you fenced any of them in yet?
Not yet. Because I thought that two, uh, twenty belonged to two sixteen, that's what, you know, they've been, you know, telling me. Uh, for, for a long, long time.
Okay.
But it don't, so.
We have a motion on the floor, a motion was made by Council Proton Robinson, supported by Councilman Ashafi to sell this. With questions, he asked his questions, do you have additional questions, Ms. Martin?
I do. Um. You, um, did talk on the phone?
We did, yes.
Did you, uh, did you bring the pictures of this? And then Ms. Jackson also want to ask you the same question I asked the previous person. Where he, it said right here, it says, whereas the goal of the city to decrease the number of parcel it owns. And to return them to productive use, what's your understanding of productive use?
Probably to make, make it look.
And then, when were you planning to fence in lots?
Before. So.
Right, but what did it look like before?
Question four, should be on the packet, yeah. Yeah, because this is you right here. Uh, you know what, I don't think I do out there, I think I just got the pictures of it cut down already on mine. Yeah, just the pictures cut down.
On this side.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, I did go by there, I went by there, okay. Okay, thank you. Um, and then you said before the winter?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
So, give me an estimate of the time before the winter to talk about. Cause I feel like it's winter and it's spring.
Um, give me. Four months.
And you haven't fenced in anything, lots that you have already. Okay, so what was? What prevented you from, uh, you said day, when you say day, you said something about day. They told you that two nineteen, so is that?
Well, I came up here to try to, you know, cut down the bushes, right?
Okay.
So, they said that two twenty belonged to two sixteen, which is my house.
And?
But, but it don't.
And was, was that downstairs?
Okay.
Wait, one of the lot that Ms. Ashafi talking about, is that on the other side of you?
Which one?
The one that we gave you, uh, uh, last year, is that on the other side of you with the nine three brand?
No, that's, um, two fourteen, um, uh, whi- which is where, where he used to live at. And.
Okay. So you have the vacant one that's right next to you, and you're trying to get the one now that's right next to that, which is two fourteen?
Two fourteen, which is on the right hand side, I purchased that from, um, Lansing Land Base. And then you have my, my house, two sixteen, and they have two twenty. And then, uh, six months ago, I purchased two twenty-two.
It's on the screen now, Ms. Manica, there's she, there's quite a bit of vacant around her, she is, bless your heart. You are, you are, you own the prairie, there's quite a bit of vacant around you, and the fact that you're trying to take ownership. Of this property is a big deal, and, and the fences will cost you ten thousand dollars, at least, at least. At least, if it, if you put it up yourself, so if you have somebody else put it up, it might cost you twice that. Um, fencing estimates have quadrupled since the pandemic, it is.
And have you looked at fencing yet?
No, but, uh, yes.
So, I can't argue with that.
Here, here, here is my issue. Sounds like we gave you, we said yes, and gave you two twenty something, I don't know, I, I took you to this point, two twenty-two. Cause you thought, and two twenties in the middle between twenty-two.
And my house.
So God forgive us. Cause I don't know how we gave you two twenty-two, and your house is way over here, right, so.
It's adjacent, it, it is adjacent, I mean, it's the adjacent property, there's nothing in between her house with space.
Yeah.
It's, it's the adjac- so it's the adjacent parcel.
Bravo. It, two twenty is in the mid, which is right next to my house. Two sixteen.
That would be adjacent.
Which they told me some years ago, that two twenty belonged to two sixteen. But once I got it all chopped, got down and stuff, and then I came back to try to get two twenty-two and two twenty-six. But I couldn't get two twenty-six because, because there's a green house next to two twenty-six and, um, someone just bought. So he is the first choice for two twenty-six, so my goal, what, what, was to get two twenty. Because it's right next to my house, but I thought it belonged to my house, but I found out that it doesn't.
So that's how we ended up thinking it was adjacent, because when you came in, you put adjacent to that. Uh, right next to.
Right next.
Okay, right next to.
So Ms. Manica, there's a better picture on the screen now.
So that doesn't change the fact that we skipped, or we've been complaining, and we gave her something that wasn't adjacent. And now she wants the adjacent. And, and if I understood you correctly, you also own the yard on the opposite side of the road. So understand, understand, I, I, I'm right now, I'm thinking about you. I understand that that's four lots. How many purchased by Highland Park?
Two, if we approve this one, it'd be two.
No, like, oh, right, right, right. Thank you.
It'd be two.
So far, just one. That's like my point, so my point is, I'm thinking of you right here. You have a house, you have two lots already, and you'd like for us to give you a third.
Yes.
Okay, I'm thinking about your water view, I'm thinking about tax, why are you looking at me like that?
No, because.
Ain't no water view?
No, because this is, those lots, those are like vacant lots.
It's still a water view.
It's fifteen dollars a month for a vacant lot.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
No, no, no. You understand what I'm saying to you, no? It sounds like you didn't know it was a water view. You don't, fantastic. Well, she's getting the bills.
Yeah.
You get a bill for those.
Property taxes.
I just bought, uh, two and twenty-two, it's about six months.
So, I would like to advise us to be careful getting too deep into a person's financial affairs. Yeah, I'm just saying, it's, I just think that, I mean, again, we have this discussion about property ownership and, and private property. Yeah, not, no, no disagreement, I mean, this is America, we went to war for private property rights. So let's just be, I want to be respectful, that we don't go too far into people's pockets because it is, it's, it's, it's TMI.
Right, cause I, cause I didn't get my house for free. Okay, and before, before anybody assumes what I'm saying to you. What I'm saying to you is to make sure you know what goes along with purchases, I have no problem with you.
Yeah, she's not voting on anything either.
Christ. Right, okay, we made the first, so again, you're standing before me, and you don't know. So I need to make sure that you know, that's all I wanted to make sure that you knew. And there was a water view, along with additional property taxes, that's not one, it's four. Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, so can we go ahead now, we have any additional questions, we can go ahead and call the roll for item? This is item E, this is a resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot to two twenty Midland. To Mr., I mean, sorry, to Ms. Buchanan Johnson, the adjacent property owner, two sixteen Midland. It's, it's, it has Jackson, it has Johnson on here, it's Jackson. Yes, ma'am, it's Jackson, forgive me, ma'am, forgive me, ma'am, so Ms. Buchanan Jackson. It says Johnson on the, on the, this sheet. Okay, so let's go ahead and take the roll on that, if you would, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilman Ashafi.
I'll go with a yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Proton Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries, congratulations, ma'am, you got a lot today. Alright. Moving on to item F, that's a resolution to sell the vacant residential adjacent lot at thirty-nine Winona. To the adjacent property owner at forty-five Winona, Mr. Brandon Lopez.
I make a motion to sell.
We have a motion on the floor from Council Proton Robinson. Do we have support?
I second that.
We have support from Councilman Ashafi, questions? Go right ahead, ma'am.
Hello.
Hello.
How you doing?
Well, how are you?
Um, first question, where do you live?
I live at one six nine Cortland.
Okay. How long you been in?
Uh, to varying degrees since COVID, but I have become a full-time resident since I have separated from my California job on November third. To twenty twenty-three.
So you've been here since twenty twenty-three?
Full-time, correct, but I've been majority time here since twenty twenty, and then only part-time before that, since twenty sixteen. Correct, yes.
And who is Matthew?
Matthew is my brother, he's also in the audience.
But this is not his ID on the.
Uh, should have been able to submit it, yes.
It looks like a younger version of you than the older version.
Uh, that is unfortunate, that should not have been the case, I submitted both of them.
Do you intend on getting a Michigan ID?
Uh, yes, but I've researched the issue and I would actually have to travel back to California and stop what I'm doing here. To locate my original birth certificate, because I need an original birth certificate to apply for a real ID.
Yeah.
And that is not easy in my situation. Yeah, and, uh, our house, the family home is under renovation, so everything is actually in storage.
They ask for, uh, utility bill and all that other, if you don't have any.
I have utility bills, I have car insurance.
And they still didn't take that?
Still didn't take that, no, they, they need it for the real ID because it, it is of federal importance, they require the birth certificate. Or some other copy if I were from another country, but I'm born in California, so the birth certificate is the way I had to go.
When does your California?
Twenty twenty-seven, so.
Don't forget.
If, if it is a priority, I can go back as soon as my current project ends, and I can go look for that birth certificate and make it the highest.
So what are your intentions with this property?
Uh, so I'd like to create a buffered zone between the house at forty-five Winona. And extend out so that, uh, we can reduce the amount of glass, broken glass from alcohol bottles and people transgressing the, uh, the property. Very close to the line of the house, um, and that would require building a fence, and I would like to include the driveway, the concrete. Into a pad so that someone can park without having to, uh, be outside of the fencible area. Yeah, cement, yeah. There's a little, there's a little pathway, but that is outside of the fencible area, because it's not, it's too close to the street. So to continue that with the fencible area, to make in, ingress and egress for the vehicle, I would need a lot to the side, there's not enough.
You want to do the lot?
Correct, not the whole area, just enough for a car.
So it's about half.
Uh, I believe it comes out to about an eighth of the lot, because, you know, for one car, one and a half car size standard. It does not require the entire lot, so we are not losing a lot of, uh, drainage area or gas, or grass fronted. Just enough for a car, and maybe a car and a half to be parked. Well, uh, surveys take around two to three weeks at current, uh, estimates. And then, unless I can get an agreement from the neighbor, not neighbor, sorry, the owner of the thirty-three Winona lot. Which is a Grace International Mission Ministries, if I can get an agreement from them, I can make it faster, we would probably be able to build it in two to three weeks. And we plan to use, uh, local labor, we have already purchased, but have not had the fencing material delivered. So we're just, we're ready to go whenever, uh, we are given the opportunity to do so.
Okay, so that's a minimum amount, what would be the max?
Uh, I mean, uh, I would say if the weather does not serve us, it could, it could just be, as long as we have a week or two of. At least dry enough weather so we can start laying concrete for the fencing posts, what do I do?
Yeah.
Uh, so I am a project manager for a renovation, renovations team out here. Uh, that we take, uh, derelict homes, we take homes that are distressed, we take homes that are not habitable. And then we transform them into habitable living units for the, for the community. This house has nothing to do with my job, this is something that I own personally with my brother, though.
So I, I, I actually have a question, not because that it has anything to do with your job, project manager is what you do, right?
Yeah.
Okay, but so as a project manager, you know what, how much time delivery will take?
Correct, yeah.
You know how much time a project is going to take, you can give me a range of how long.
Correct.
Break it down to milestones and steps, right?
Correct, yes.
So that's why I asked.
For sure.
Okay, so let's, so let's, let's go back again.
Sure.
You gave me quickest is two weeks.
Quickest, yeah.
What's the longest you can get, since you said the weather permits and all this?
Yeah, so the longest I think it would ever take, given the weather that I've seen here in Michigan, again, very different from where I'm from. Uh, probably two months, right? Um, but I do think it would be much less, all we need is about a week and a half of good dry weather. Um, for the concrete to make sure that it's all set and not leaning, because we obviously want it to look good after, and then be durable through any storm that may come by.
Alright, okay, and so I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked previously. And I think we, I asked you this on the phone, when you say return them to productive use, what was that, what does that understand for you?
So, uh, yes, there is the aesthetic factor of making it look pretty, you know, obviously you can plant around a fence, et cetera. Um, but for us, the productive nature of that fenced-in lot is actually the preservation of existing property. So for instance, if you think of your car being broken into as negative productive, uh, capacity. You know, we've actually had our stuff stolen from that property because of where the car is located on that side of the property. Um, we, we feel that productive use is increasing the safe usable space of that house and preserving existing property. Whether it's vehicles, children's toys, pet areas, et cetera.
And instead of taking two weeks, it's months to build the garage, I'm creating.
Uh, not, not a, probably not a garage, so that estimate would be, get the fencing and then lay the concrete for the pad for the car to sit on, but not a full-on garage.
Right, and you've been looking at fencing.
We have the fencing already purchased, correct. Uh, that would be a later step, so I, I don't want to say that we've done that road yet, but the concrete pad, for sure, we've looked into.
Ms. Manica, you would?
Have you come before, thank you?
I have, yes.
For?
Uh, I believe August of last year, we, uh, petitioned and were sold the lot at forty-nine Winona, which is the lot on the other side. Uh, that lot was already fenced in by a previous owner, so when we acquired the home eight years ago. We had put in the application seven years ago to get that lot, as well as the one that we're discussing right now. And then I have also been here on behalf of the company that I work for, but those have been, you know, farther in the, farther in the past. But for my own personal interest, yes, I was sold the lot in August of last year.
Sorry, what company is that?
It's, uh, Premier Michigan Properties.
It's, uh, they have other properties here in Hala Park?
They do.
I remember correctly. Why don't you tell me how many?
How many properties that the company owns? I, I'm not at liberty to say it's not my company. I don't know. I can tell you how many I own. I can tell you anything I have personal interest in. I do own some other properties in Highland Park, yes. I do live in Cortland, yes.
Okay, let's call the roll. So for resolution to sell the vacant residential Jason lot at thirty-nine Winona to the adjacent property owner at forty-five Winona. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Councilman Ashafi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
No.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
Yes.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, sir. You got a lot today. Um, item nine under engineering, resolution authorizing the acceptance of additional. And deletion of certain major and local streets within the city of Highland Park. Public right-of-way under Act fifty-one, mileage certification for cities and villages. City Council, what's your pleasure? This is item eight now.
Approved with questions. I need somebody to explain this to me, because I've read it several times, but it's not making much sense. Maybe that's because I'm not an engineer.
Do we have support?
Support.
Good evening.
Evening, so please explain.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to make it simple for you, okay? So each year, uh, there's some updated information, some mapping. So each year, uh, in order for the city of Highland Park to receive Act fifty-one money. They need to certify the mile, miles of road they have, because the funding is based on the miles of road.
Right.
Okay, so what you have before you today is a request to approve. Deletion of some roads that happened as a part of the means group development. And some addition of some roads that were some Highland Park properties that we wanted to bring back into Highland Park's jurisdiction. So that there wasn't a loss, too big of a loss of revenue. So basically, over there were Stuart Frankel's property, Oakland Park Court, all of that, that.
I remember that.
So Chrysler moved out, we, uh, we had, when we got here in sixteen, uh, the right-of-way was supposed to be dedicated, never got dedicated. We couldn't figure out who was supposed to be plowing the road, so that was Oakland Park. And then, uh, what we also did is we, uh, we were told that Highland Park is supposed to be maintaining the crossover across Davison. So we added, we added in the property from Oakland, we added the crossover over Davison in, and we subtracted the means group roads out. So there, and, and the other thing I should point out is, we went through the, the maps that we had, and we reclassified the roads. To try to get more linear footage, because back in twenty-two, it was forty-six point three eight miles. And we did a GIS study, and it's really forty-eight point three four. So we're asking MDOT. We're asking the state to acknowledge that we have more miles of road than what they have on record. And we're also asking them to take action on the deletion and the addition of roads, so that we can, uh. Potentially receive additional funding, so that.
What about the roads?
I see, Madam Pro Tim.
What about the roads over there on Second? When I go into those, uh, uh, those, those townhouses over there, and that winding road and them big gigantic ass potholes sitting in them roads? What about those roads?
Okay. You want to know why there's potholes there?
No, 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 I'm, I'm wondering. Are those going to be roads that are going to be considered?
Yes, yes, they are, they are, they are currently, no, 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 though we already have those roads.
Right, I know we have them, I tell you, they've been asking if they can make those roads private.
That, no, that's not part of this request.
Then, then I must say y'all really need to fix them, because it's horrible over there.
That, that's fair.
It's horrible, and when I say it's horrible, I literally, I feel like I'm playing Super Mario Brothers over there.
Okay.
It's really bad.
Okay.
And then, you know, uh, and then we have the roads, uh, 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 over there, uh, 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 you know, behind me. Oh, Edwards, and going back, those roads are horrible, man, you know what I'm saying? And I understand it's only a few people that's living owning roads, but just because it's only a couple of houses owning roads, doesn't mean that they have to live in Beirut. Okay? Yeah, oh, yeah, you know, the roads are horrible back there, and then we get on back, uh, into, into the Jocelyn area over there, and those roads are horrible, and it's a lot of people over there. It's still a lot of people that live in the Marys. You know, I said, granted, it may not be as populated as it used to be, but if we're going to fix one set of roads, I would like for us to fix it all. I mean, it's only two point nine square miles. You know, and, and, oh, and for the love of God, if I have to go across Oakland to Six Mile one more time. One more time, that road needs to be finished. Y'all did one side of it, it needs to be finished on the other side. Okay, I do believe that the money has been given for that.
Any additional questions?
I have my hand up.
Yes, uh, Madam Pro Tim?
Mr. Dan McGarrett, can you please define the word deletion and list the streets that you want to delete?
So deletion is what it sounds like, it's removal, right? Um, and in the packet on, uh, this, this, we have. We have this map here with roads to be, we have all the roads listed in the city. And the ones that are highlighted, we have the deletions and we have the additions. So would you, would you like to know what's being added?
That was my question.
Okay, so let's, I'm gonna go in order by what's being added, and then I'm gonna go what's being removed or proposed to be removed.
I just only want to know the ones that's being removed.
Oh, are you, okay, so, uh, Fort Street.
Wow, Ford between?
Ford between Lincoln and Hamilton, okay? Pasadena between Lincoln and Hamilton. Lincoln between Fort and Pasadena. Lincoln between Fort and Pasadena. West Grand Street from Lincoln to Hamilton. West Grand Street from West Grand to West Grand. Auburndale Street from Lincoln to Hamilton. Lincoln Street from West Grand Street to Auburndale. Uh, West Grand Street from Thompson to Trumble. Auburndale from Trumble to Lincoln. Trumble Street from West Grand to Auburndale. Auburndale from Thompson to Trumble. Waverly from Trumble to Lincoln. Tyler from Thompson to Lincoln. Trumble from Waverly to Tyler. Waverly from Thompson to Trump. So those, all of those roads were within the means group development. That's what that basically is, that got removed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have no further questions.
Ashley Capital on Hamilton, the greenhouse, you know where the greenhouse conversation was?
All the, the streets already got deleted?
No, they're, we're proposing to remove those. Me, meaning, so the right-of-ways were vacated, right, but they're still on our Act fifty-one tab.
Okay.
So in order to clean that up, we have to remove those, and then we're adding the ones that are in yellow above.
Okay, so to add that, to delete, or delete these?
Yep, that's Ashley Capital's. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so to have these add-ons, remove these roads, repeat the access, so that means they're access or?
No, we, we are. Okay, so the purpose is Highland Park has X miles of road, and each year we have to verify how many miles of roads that we have. And if there is any change in the configuration of that, we have to report it, because we get our Act fifty-one funding is based on those roads. So when we, so when that Ashley Capital development was, was happening, built, we vacated all those roads, it took all those years, they bought all those people out. And, and so now, since that vacation process is complete and that development is finished. Now we're saying those roads, we have to report those roads as, because they're not roads.
Okay.
So we have to report them to the state and says, we are asking for these roads to be removed. And, and then what also has happened is we, all that stuff over O- Oakland Park, that right-of-way, all that was added back in. So nothing happened over there, except for those roads were unmaintained, they were private. So, so that we didn't lose all that funding, we did a swap, so we took these roads out and we put roads in. Because if we just took roads out, they're just gonna, they're just gonna decrease Highland Park's funding. And, and Act fifty-one to, uh, Councilman Ashafi's point, is one of the ways that we are, we, we can maintain or attempt to maintain roads through the Act fifty-one fund.
Now, all the other, even white is?
That's just our roads, nothing, yes, what we have. This is a, this is a, a tally of all the roads in Highland Park. The ones that are in yellow are additions, the ones that are in that reddish color are removed.
That is a question I would ask.
So right here, right here. This is all those roads that, uh, that, uh, person asked about.
Shouldn't it?
But, but, well, those, those, that is one development, so it doesn't affect any attachment at all. And that big building, so no, that's already, that happened.
We're not taking questions, sir. I see your hand up. I don't want to have you hold it up there. We still in the middle of council business. I was just about to say, I know, Missy, Mr., Council, do we have any additional questions before we go ahead and? Okay, thank you. I saw, Ms. Martin, please, the floor is yours. Yes, ma'am, after that, please, just want to make sure. Mr. Garrett? Yeah, please. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Um, I forgot what was that, ma'am?
Uh, we were on the additions.
Right, right, so I understand that, because that is, so I make sure I understand it's weird. This is what's already deleted, that building's right here, this is what you're adding, correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so my next question, just to go, I understand.
Yes, wonder about that?
Yeah, I want to know about these sheets, because, you know, I've had people like, what's this?
Okay, so in order to ha, we have to, in order to make these additions. We have to have sketches and we have to have legal descriptions proving that this is what we want to add. So what you're seeing is a sketch and a legal description of the property that's being added. So when we say we want to add point two three, they, they want to say, okay, how, how do, how do we know that? Verify that, show us the document, show us the legal description, prove it to us. That's where those sketches are.
Okay, we getting somewhere, here it is. Okay. Um, now my next question is, the attachment A, when you said like Davidson crossroads, explain.
Yes, it's just, it's just this guy right here, it crosses over the same. It's the little guy that crosses over.
Green market, yes, right here? Okay, and that's what all of this?
No, though, what, all of those, that list, the stuff that you're referring to are the additions, so Davison crossover is part of that?
Davison crossover is the first one.
Right, right.
And then Oakland, Oakland, and everything else.
Got it, okay, okay, got it.
You have a visual of it and a written document.
Done, okay. I must say, I love when you put these in color.
You like the maps?
I love it.
Okay.
Okay, and then my last question is, if you can explain these two. Is that, is that reflection of what this is?
Well, let me get to, let me get to where you are.
Or is that something different? Does that go with a different? Is that not under the same umbrella?
Yes, this is, it's the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
So B, and these are like A, B, C, like what? Attachment B, is that something different? Is that what this?
No, that's not it.
Okay, that's what, okay, so it's a deeper description?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so this, you know, we try to make it simple and to, Councilman Ashafi, it's a lot, it's a lot, but you get visuals, you get writings. And so you have, you have tables, you have visuals, and you have written scriptures. So all three, however you learn or however you pick up information, we put it all in there so that there's no discussion about what we're calling.
Okay.
So it's a little bit redundant, but if we just put tables in there, people might not get it, so.
And now that you broke it down, it makes a lot more sense. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Additional questions?
I, I, I do want to say one thing, if, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, so we, we probably, you know, that, we hadn't had this kind of rapport, right? It was before the means group development, it was kind of status quo, it was no change. So you may never have seen this level of detail come before the council. So where we are going now is when we're, with all this development and all these things that are happening. Vacations, the roads, there's, you're gonna start to see a lot more of this, we're gonna have a lot more of these discussions, depending on what developers want to do. So if you, you say, hey, this is all new, why we didn't get it, it's because there wasn't a change. But if somebody says, I want to get these two blocks and I want to do X, Y, and Z, then we're gonna have to go, this has to be documented in our annual procedure. The other thing is to understand that when those developments come, that's revenue. When they, when they say, I want to vacate these roads and do that, that's revenue that's coming from the city, okay? So the other part of that, what we've been talking to CED and trying to get out, is that you, you gotta give something to get something. So if our Act fifty-one funding is being reduced, then these perimeter roads, and you can pave those roads, because you're taking away our ability to be able to do that with our fund. So the trade-off for the development is, when you, when you heard people talking about development agreements, we come in here, now we say you want to do this, you're gonna pave this road right here. Or you're gonna replace some of this water main. So a lot of this, now where we're going is getting the developers to understand that nothing's for free. Highland Park's not just giving things away, right? Because we don't have any money, so when this development comes, we have to be in the position to say, that's great. So when you, when you, if we can give you those roads, we can give you this property, but this is what we need you to do, we need you to pave X, Y. Because otherwise, we don't have the money. We just gave it away, we just gave away revenue. We're not in a position to do that. So now that we understand that's what we're doing, when we get to the table with them, we say, hey, in the beginning, this is what we want. If you want this property, this is what you need to do. You need to put in this water main, you need a place for sewer, you know, that, that stuff costs. So if we give you the property for a fair price, you, you gotta, you gotta get some, we gotta get something in return. Because we get, we get impacted if we give too much away to get progress. So they, we gotta let them know that we hear what you're saying, but, you know, we, we want to benefit too. Otherwise, they just get in here and they get what they want, and then we still have the same problems. So I just want to put that out, so you, I'm just saying, as a long statement to say, we probably will be having this conversation again. But I, I, I just want to start having that dialogue so that you understand we come back with the maps. We know exactly what, and you can ask different questions about, did you get this, what about this? So that's, that's, that's just what I want to close with, as far as this goes. That, that was it.
Okay, sir, thank you so much. Uh, would you go ahead and call the roll on item nine under engineering? It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the additions and deletions of certain major road, roads under public Act fifty-one.
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item ten under finances, submission of the monthly financial statement for March of twenty twenty-four.
I move to accept, I'm sorry.
Receive and file.
Receive and file submission of monthly financial statement for March two thousand twenty.
Chair offers a second. We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica to receive and file our monthly financial statement. Questions, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I just don't even understand how we can even do this, so I have no way of. Let's go, let's call the vote.
Okay, let's take the roll on item ten A, submission of the monthly financial statement.
Councilman Ashafi.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilwoman Manica.
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Robinson.
No.
Council President Thomas.
Yes, thank you very much. Moving on to item ten B, submission of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. Is this a receiving file? This is a receiving file at a budget proposal. Thank you very much.
I move to receive and file proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five.
Chair offers a second.
Discussion.
Mr. Shafi, go ahead.
When are we hearing it? When are we going to have the hearings for, for, for the budget?
Scheduled for May 20th.
Scheduled for May 20th.
I just received the email. From Ms. Williamson. She's asking for a workshop on the 29th.
Yeah, I'll, I'll confirm that. So.
Okay, well, Carl, I, I think it's, I think it's premature to receive and file this before we had the hearing on it.
How are we going to review it if we don't receive and file it?
Yeah, so the, we delivered it to you. So again, receive file or whatever, it's, you have it. And two weeks from now, we want to have the workshop to discuss it. And then our goal would be to have the public hearing and approval on May 20th. So we're way earlier than we have historically, and that gives us a chance for you guys to all take a look at it. So again, receive and file or not, you know, the, the main purpose of tonight is to schedule the, yeah, schedule the workshop in the public here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role? I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, go ahead. Get those hands up quick.
Question, um, Mr. Clark, would you consider us a distressed state? Let me see. Based on our budget?
Based on the state's definition, you are. But based on your budget, you are fiscally sound and you've had a balanced budget for the two or three years that I've been here. So this is another one as well.
So the state would consider us that we are, but our budget would not?
Again, the distress thing is good because we get, that's what enables us to get the grants and a lot of those other things. So they call us whatever they like in order to give us money. So, uh, but yes, fiscally, we are in, on sound. Putting it again, we'll discuss that in two weeks.
In your opinion, would it be better to be able to invest? If the city was able to invest, wouldn't that be a little bit better? Or not necessarily?
So again, while we're fiscally stable, we, every dime we get, we spend. And you hear our roads could use a few million more, our water sewer fund could use a film, four million more. Ask our public safety department, they could use a few million more. And actually, you guys probably want air conditioner too. So, um, like I say, operation wise, we have a, we have a balanced budget and we're fiscally stable. Remember 10 years ago, we were losing millions annually. So we've come a long way. And again, we'll discuss that a little more in two.
And then last question. If we were to do a financial forecast, right? Would you, wouldn't that be able to prevent us from, um, being a distressed state or being in a deficit or even, you know, repeating the next 10 years?
The forecasts only are good if the, if there's changes that really need to be incorporated. You know, for us, as an example, this budget's put together based on, here's where we were last year. Here's where I'm projecting all your revenues are. And boy, we got it to balance. You know, that, that's what it is. So any projections out one year, two year, three year, unless we have millions of dollars worth of new development or significant income tax revenue coming in or such, every year, the budget's going to be like that. It's going to be, did we break even? Do we have a balanced budget, et cetera? So, um, we could go to a two or three year budget, but I wouldn't tell you anything. The literally, the budget would just say, our revenues equal expenses each year. And really what'll get you out of the distressed is the growth in revenues. So right now, you're, the new development that you had come in here, that was a huge boost for us the last few years. It, that's what's going to increase things for us and supply us additional revenues and allow us to do more stuff.
So right now, we're creating a budget for pretty much just.
No, we're, no, the, uh, what we're, what we're doing is we are budgeting for the revenues we receive. We're fiscally, we're fiscally, what's the word I'm looking for? We're fiscally, um, uh, prudent with our monies. So we look each year to say, how much money do we have? And the budget's based on how much money we have. We're not going into deficit. The two years before I got here, we dipped into fund balance to the tune of a half a million dollars a year in each of those years. And the last two years, we haven't done that. And the goal has always been to live within our means. And to the extent we get additional revenues, we can invest those and start to, that's where you're talking about, start investing those in additional. But we're really not quite there yet. So we've really just turned the corner to, to stability. And now we, we'll see what happens. We need to continue to grow to, to improve things.
Okay. We will go ahead and call the role on the receiving and filing of the proposed fiscal year budget for 2025. Motion made by Councilwoman Manica, supported by the chair. Madam Deputy Clerk?
Councilman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. So city council will not receive a copy of the budget that we're supposed to vote on. Okay, moving on to item 11. This is under recreation. This is to apply for the Detroit area on agency grant opening in April and May of 2024. City council, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to apply for the grant with questions.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilperson, Councilman Woman Robinson. We have support?
Support with questions.
Floor is yours.
Um, why are we getting involved in the AAA?
Well, I will tell you currently as a part of being in Wayne County in this specific area, we are supported by Detroit area agency on aging. Our previous, um, senior coordinator, our current pro temp did a wonderful job of helping us get a grant, which has actually allowed us to be able to do all of the programming you saw last year. So if you think about the eight to 10 activities we did last year in regards to currently, we are calling over 150 seniors every month to tell them about activities, to tell them about resources. We could not do that work without the work that she did. And that partnership came from Detroit area agency on aging. They gave us Ms. Sharon, and I think a lot of the seniors will say they know Ms. Sharon because she is doing all of the calling. So that is the reason why we look to find opportunities to get financed and support from Detroit area agency on aging.
Are they asking anything from us?
They asking for nothing from us. That's a wonderful thing about it. The grant money comes from the state.
Oh, that I know. That I know. But I'm just asking the question, Miss Ford. I know, I'm just asking the question. I'm curious. I'm asking the question. Okay, so they don't want anything from us?
Not, nothing at all. They just asked that when we get the money, that we do what we're supposed to do, and we've done that. Without that programming, that the work that she did, we would never be able to be where we are today. So we're hoping to continue to grow upon the work, great work that she did to take it to the next level. But we need money to do that.
So my question is. Why is it under recreation and not under senior coordinator?
I have no idea. I was going to ask that question too, but I didn't think it was appropriate to ask. Um, I don't know. I don't know why I was put in that category. When I came in, I saw recreation, I'm like, hmm. But, you know, I can't.
Is it always still under senior coordinator? So.
Yeah. Thank you. I will actually ask, because I, you know, I just, as they say, I serve at the pleasure and I do as I'm told. So, thank you.
Ms. Manica?
So you can answer that question for them? So maybe we can amend this right now and get a vote?
Uh, we can approve it as it is. They just have it listed under the wrong department.
But my resolution, if, if you look at my resolution, it says nothing about recreation in my resolution.
Okay. All right. Well, it, it's been moved and supported. Let's finish.
Time out. Sorry, excuse me. She has a doubt. Is this one on the recreation or is it one on the senior coordinator?
Her resolution says senior coordinator.
Yeah, they just, it's, it's a typo here. And the attorney just said, the motion's on the floor to approve it.
Thank you, Mr. President. The council speaks through the resolution. So.
So we'll just, if we can strike through item 11 on the agenda, change that in the minutes to show that it is actually senior, senior coordinator?
Yes, sir.
So when the minutes come out, it will say senior coordinator. It will not say recreation.
And you can approve those minutes.
Yeah, and we will approve those minutes with those changes.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right, if we go, call for the role on item 11, it's the, uh, the ability to apply for the Detroit area on agency grant opening May, April 2024. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you call the role?
Councilman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Council Pro Tem Robinson?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. We are at the end of our agenda. I'm setting this watch for two minutes on the dot. It is quarter to 10, not even quarter, it's five to 10.
You know what? I gotta, I want to add something, Mr. President.
Council affairs or what we doing here?
No, I'm, I'm just going to add a request to you.
Yes, ma'am.
When a citizen asks a question, and then somebody in, whether it's one of us or administration, could that not include their two minutes of their time? Sometimes I want to hear what, what they have to say.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that, that, that's a reasonable request. However, what we run the, we run the risk of not being able to keep a uniform count of how we do our time. In every other community that I go to, they have a giant clock with a very loud buzzer. And at the end of two minutes, the time is up. And they're polite, but you know, the bailiffs in the city of Detroit will show you the door if you go over your two minutes.
We're a solid crowd.
I understand that, that's still, we're, we're still a city. We're still a city. We're still a city. It's the same if you would go to, to Port Huron or to Clary, or if you were to go to Muskegon, if you were to go to Traverse City, they have these rules. They're written into our bylaws. What you're asking is not an unreasonable request. It's not unreasonable. So, um, we'll, 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 we'll bend the edges. We'll bend the edges when we can. Um, but, but again, we run into, yeah, we, we run the risk of, here we are at almost 10 o'clock. We run the risk of, you know, spending the night here. Um, the, the, the purpose of the, the questions that come from the audience and us having an opportunity for council affairs is for us to, with, with whatever capacity we have to try and address the questions and maybe take up conversation with those people outside of the meeting. Because again, this is a framework. This is the council's meeting. The citizens are our guests here. We do all the voting. We do all the talking. They are witnesses to make sure that we're honest in our meeting. So that's the purpose of it. So if we would, if we have citizens who would like to speak, if you guys would be respectful, I, I, whether you know it or not, it's more than two minutes. Because it's hard for me to interrupt my elders while they're talking. I just wasn't raised like that.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh, responding, because I am.
Ms. Bright?
Um, Ms. Square, you said something that kind of surprised me that I didn't know, and I've learned a lot since I've been coming to city council meeting. Because like I said before, I didn't expect to get over 60 and have to seem like I'm fighting for what I've worked so hard for all of my life. That we will always have a city administrator because we're, uh, I, I owe to the state. Did you say that? So we always have a city administrator to the state. Ah, didn't know that. So that was a lesson for me. Um, thank you for that.
That happened in 2014. The city's been broke, um, broke three times. And so then, you know, you had three emergency managers. You had, uh, Ramon Pearson. Then you had Art Blackwell. And then you had Mason. And the fourth time was when the plant got shut down. So the city's gone broke four times.
So it's three emergency managers on Highland Park? Because I think they were the first to have these managers, right?
Well, the problem happened when Chrysler left. They took all the money. You just didn't have any money that you used to have. 30 million a year. And you've been shrinking ever since.
Okay. History of Highland Park.
Yeah.
So, uh, the other, uh, question I have is to Damon. I am, uh, I'm kind of sad now. I'm feeling kind of weird about this situation over there in the area that I've been in for more than eight years and nothing have came there. And when Mr. Mean spoke, God rest his soul, he was a beautiful man and made many promises. But, uh, to open this up is what is it opening up a gateway for? I would like to know. So maybe we can talk after the meeting. Yes, a- a- absolutely. Uh, I'm not gonna, in that clock, um, one more time. Um, Ms. Manica, Councilwoman Manica, I don't think you have the right to tell anyone where they can be placed at in the city or what they're worth unless they're young, under a certain age. I have children and I can say you work good in this department or you work good in that department. You shouldn't do that. You know, it's inappropriate. And there are a lot of things that seem inappropriate tonight, uh, uh, dealing with this situation of the treasurer.
Yes, ma'am.
So anyway, we had a great meeting. I enjoyed myself and a lot of knowledge.
Ma'am, Ms. Manica, you know, you got to write it down. I know, we got to be uniform. We have to be uniform. And I appreciate everybody's patience. Everybody hates the chairman. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody.
How are you, sir?
I appreciate all you guys for what I'm getting ready to ask. I just basically want to update on the, um, yield sign on Davidson. Because I've been up there and I haven't seen any work towards going towards it or nothing. It's the same every day. I'll ride by there every day if I have to, because I told you, I got grandbabies that use that Berry exit to get to Tennesse. So if you, uh, I don't know. I'll do volunteer service up there at Olden Hill side.
Amen.
Because I got babies, man, then if something happened to them because I didn't do something. I used to work for this town.
Yes.
And I love this town. But I don't love it that much to give up my babies. So please see if you can handle that for me, Council President.
No, sir. I'm not an engineer. I'm a chemist.
No, but.
I'm a chemist.
Davidson and Oakland.
You got a medical question I can help with.
Davidson and Oakland, where the service drive coming up off the freeway, off the Davidson freeway and, uh, and the service drives up on the land. They're meeting there, those cars. And you got that light at Oakland. So they're racing to that light. You know what I mean? Nobody's yielding for nobody.
Are you talking about the, um, the plant? I mean, the company?
Plant, you're facing the plant. You're heading.
Thank you. That all I've ever.
Right.
Okay.
That is a county road. Exactly. But they told me that last week, last month, when I came, we'll, we'll contact the county and get them to take care of it.
Okay, this is, I've heard you.
All right, thanks, sir. Additional citizens like to be heard?
Hi, everybody. It's just me here. Is, if you have been a certified CPA for 40 years, does that prepare you to be the treasurer?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. What?
So that mean I need to pass?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Ain't nobody joking.
Exactly. Uh, I'm, I'm looking at these properties. And then I look at my property. In the last month or so, my whole fence around my house has disappeared. First they took the padlot, then they took the gate. Now the whole thing. So my house is open from the alley all the way to the city street. Now I know it's going to cost me some money, man. I think you need to be aware of it. And it's a sofa and, and some tires back there. And this, you know, like I'm saying, it's hard on us citizens. Y'all have to realize that. Because a lot of this stuff has to come out of our pocket.
Yeah.
And, and it's not that it's something we want to do. I can find something else to do with $5,000 to put a fence around my house.
Yeah.
And I'm looking out there the other day. I'm saying, where did all this stuff come from? Nobody living in this house but me. And I know I'm not lifting to no sofas. And I got all this stuff. And another thing, I have a possum bigger than the average dog walking up and down my driveway and down the street. Yesterday, I was scared to come out my house. And I mean, some of the people, the audience told me some things to do for that, but I'm not going out there playing with him, whether he gonna fight me back or not. So I think that if he that big, and some of the people say that they pregnant, somebody from the city need to come out there and see about him because I'm not go, go out and can't put my garbage in my garbage can. First of all, the garbage man took the top off the garbage can. I went and bought a garbage can. They had an attached top, right? Didn't they break that off? So like, you know, garbage cans are not cheap like they used to be. You got to pay for them. So I'm saying, you have to, a lot of times when you're looking at this stuff, you have to think of us poor citizens out here. you looking at this stuff, you have to think of us poor citizens out here on a fixed income, trying to keep this city going for you. And we're not getting any help, you know, and when we call the city, that, okay, we'll see about it, but we don't hear nothing. If you don't do it yourself, you don't get it done. Now, I'm in the process, y'all look for me, I'm in the process, if y'all tear that house down next to me, I'm in the process of buying four lot. And I'm not gonna tear that house down. But I'm seriously, because we have a sports pavilion we wanna put up in that area, that's why I keep asking, what do you wanna do with this land? Don't just fist this land in and let the grass grow up over the fence. You know, that, to me, that's not living area. We do wanna put a small sport pavilion in the area that, you know, where I live. And I know it's gonna take time, and we're not gonna do anything till y'all tear them two houses down, because that's part of the property that we want. So, I mean, y'all look out for us.
Yes, ma'am.
It's costing us a lot of money just to live in Highland Park.
Yes, it does. Thank you for pointing that out, too. I'm gonna write that down, because it needs to be addressed. Any additional citizens? Hey, Ms. Ford. No, Ms. Ford, I'm over here writing my head down, okay, so?
Well, you shouldn't have your head down.
Sorry, when I, okay, I can't write and look up.
I wanna address, Council, she, when they said something about applying for the Detroit area agent, I was waiting on you to say no, because I was gonna come up here slap you.
Why would I say no? He helped me with my mother, who slowly died.
Thank you, and that's what I was gonna say. Since she has been in office or in that position, they have done a lot. And I'm not saying with the parties or whatever, you know, Valentine Day, they have helped my mother get a cap tail phone, because you know, hard of hearing. So, that has really helped, because I'm not always at home, because I do have to work. They have put in carbon monoxide detectors that the fire department doesn't seem to ever have, or smoke detectors. I've been asking for three years. Every time I go up there, they don't have it. So, our senior coordinator has had someone come in and provide them for myself as a senior and my mom. So, when something like that Detroit area agent, please counsel people. I know you're not seniors, but the majority of us in the audience is. And they have done quite a bit for us. Next thing I wanna know, we, you guys need to come together with this treasurer thing, or whatever y'all doing, because I'm personally getting sick of hearing it myself. And when you saying she's not bonded yet, we don't know, when is she gonna be bonded? Is that not bonded by the time we pay our taxes in October? I'm taking my money away, I'm taking my money personally down at a one time, because I don't feel comfortable with my money sitting over here and nobody's certified to do this. So, please, if y'all have to have a special meeting, whatever, whatever, get it together. Because at what time, how long are we gonna leave this open ending? You know, how long do we leave this open ending? And Council President, you stated that council is really not supposed to answer our questions. I've noticed, I noticed that several meetings, I have asked question, and you said, oh, they'll get to it at council affair, and they've never gotten to it. And I have all my paperwork to prove where my questions are, that never got answered at council affair. So.
Ford, I'm gonna allow you to hold me to task on that, and I'll take that.
I mean, that goes for anybody, I need my questions answered. I'm gonna be interrupted, and the young man is just gonna have to throw me out, because I'm tired of not getting my questions answered.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jamil Edwards. I have two things. One is personal. I retired in two thousand and eighteen, and when you become sixty-two years of age, you can get social security. But I can't, because I have missing years. I need to set up appointment with, I guess, finance, so that I can get my W two, so that I can get my proper dispersment at sixty-two years old. And two things, I think either you should ask your council to show you how to conduct a meeting as Robert Rules of Order, because when somebody call a question, you cannot talk, you have to vote. Two, when you talk about abstaining a vote, it has to either be financially gain in your home, but you can't hold somebody accountable that they know somebody or bought something from somebody in a small city of two point nine. Everybody know everybody, and everybody done bought something from everybody. So, that means that nobody can be any elected official in the city of Highland Park. I think we need to rethink that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizens have comment? Hey, Billy.
Hi, my name is William Zook, you can call me Billy. And I wanna talk once again about what I mentioned two weeks ago, which is our yard waste. And I, since that time, I got in contact with the state to find out just exactly what our law was about, about disposal of yard waste. And it seems that our yard waste cannot go into landfills at any time of the year. I have the law right here in front of me. And Highland Park needs to do something about that. I also called the company that picks up our trash, and there they were shocked to hear that, well, at least surprised to hear that, that they were putting our yard waste in their garbage packers. So, we need to do something in Highland Park. If anyone needs a copy of the legislation on that regard, provide me with the email address, and I'd be happy to send it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Billy.
Yeah, I'll text you my email, Billy. Chief?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
All right. I wasn't gonna come up here, because I gotta be honest with you, I'm just getting discouraged. You know, DT reached out to us because they said they had many people inquiring about a kiosk in a safe location in the city of Highland Park. So, we did our best to accommodate them, and provide them a space, in a space that we assume hopefully will be occupied on a full-time basis here soon. Only to have it voted down today, which is extremely disappointing, because we operate typically Monday through Friday, someone's there eight to four. We've installed monitors, we're making efforts to try and be available for everybody. Unfortunately, you know, we're having some staffing issues with that. But again, we're trying to make this space available, so people can have a safe place to pay their bills and not get robbed, because DT is advising us that people are getting robbed at stations, payment centers, you know, in the surrounding area. So, they're looking for a space. We try to provide it, and then it gets voted down. So, I really don't know what direction this council wants to go with the police department, because when I got involved, I thought the whole goal was community engagement, and trying to make, you know, build a relationship between the community and the police department, and put together programs, and put together conveniences for the citizens. But then I get up here only to get it voted down. I mean, the city doesn't benefit, the police department certainly doesn't benefit. When they came to us, we thought, man, this is a good opportunity, people can come in, we can small talk with them, have a good conversation, pay their bill, they're safe. There's no benefit to the police department by doing it, it's more of an inconvenience than anything. However, it's us trying to accommodate a community that has a need. So, I don't know, that's all I wanted to say, and I want the citizens to understand where we are coming from. There's no benefit to the police department by this, it was strictly for the citizens.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We will move on to council affairs.
Councilman from the third district?
So, I have a few issues here tonight, and I'll try not to be long. On Hamilton Avenue, on Hamilton Avenue, let me pull this out. There's a property that has been rezoned residential, when it's clearly a commercial property. And what I'm trying to get to the bottom of is who could possibly have authorized that? I've already talked to the county, Mr. Sabree said it came from the city. He said he had nothing to do with it. He said it has been rezoned residential, when it's a commercial property. And the address is sixteen three forty-four Hamilton. I wanna know who authorized that? The property has a fifty thousand dollar water debt on it. And if it's a commercial property, whoever buys it must pay the water debt off its floor. They don't get no breaks, no helps, or no assistance. But by zoning it, but by rezoning it as a residential home, by rezoning it as a residential home, now all of a sudden, they apply, they get to get thaw and other assistance to help pay down their debt on our backs. And I find that interesting, I wanna know how that property got rezoned residential, when it's a clear-cut commercial property facing Hamilton. It's not a home. It's a commercial piece of property. So, I'm curious as to how that got done. Okay. I got, I got a quick question here. Who is in charge? Well, maybe, maybe legal can answer this. I don't wanna put you on the spot cam. Okay. Okay, so, so, who is in charge of appointments to the zoning board?
It would be dictated by the charter, wouldn't it?
I, I don't, I can answer that.
We can have an answer at the next council meeting.
Okay, okay, okay. So, also, who is in charge of appointments to the ZBA?
That's the zoning board?
Yeah.
So, you mean like the planning commission and the ZBA?
No, 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 no. The zoning board and the zoning board of appeals, the two boards.
Okay.
City council.
Yeah, you and I both know that to be a bank. Okay, so, so, so what I'm trying to figure out here, it had to come from the zoning.
Zoning board hasn't met in three years.
Okay, so, who approved the rezoning of that?
If you read the charter, you would know that the planning commission has zoning oversight. The ZBA is an appellate board. They hear appeals. So, if you go to planning commission, planning commission through the mayor's office does all those things, and it's the, ZBA only hears appeals.
That's the question you asked.
Okay, that's not the question I asked.
Try again.
Okay. The question I asked, and I asked the legal, which legal should know, but obviously not. How did this particular building rezoned this year? Yes, just a month ago. Somebody rezoned.
Zoning doesn't just change like that, there's a stack of paper that has to go through, it has to go through planning commission.
If there's one thing I learned about this city here, we love to do shit we not supposed to do.
Yeah, yeah.
We love doing.
That's not a true statement.
And that's a problem here. There's always something new. There's always something new. And again, every time I ask a question, I get no answers.
Council President? I'm right here. Mr. Shafi asked a question, and I wanna respond, please.
Knock yourself out.
If he can get me information, what day, at what month, was this done? And I will pull up all of the agendas, because if it was done in twenty twenty-four, there's no meeting that talks about them rezoning this property. So, please give me the date.
One six.
Not the address, I want the date.
The address is one six three four four, parcel ID number is four three zero 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 three zero one zero six five seven zero zero two.
Mr. Shafi, I ask you for the date that this was done.
I'll take, give me the address again, Mr. Shafi.
I need the, I need the date that this was done. Can I finish? I need the date that this was done.
Okay.
And you said it was done this year.
It's next door to a church.
So, you said it was done this year.
So, Hamilton?
Yeah, and I'm looking at it right now. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
He said it was done this year, which means there's only been two meetings this year, two.
Looking at you.
And so, that means it would have had to happen in the last two months. So, I would like to know what month did this happen, and so that I can pull the minutes, which they do have minutes, and I can find out what part, I know the address that you're saying, I've read, I already heard that. I need to know the month. So, there are minutes for this, and there was nobody approached at the meeting that asked for a rezoning of this property. So, in order for me to get your answer, I need the information. I will pull the minutes that we have from the last two months. It's only been three months in this year, except this one, and they just met.
You know, two left feet, so, let's just, let's just do this. You don't, the county controls, here we are on land grid, the county controls the designation for all land zone in the county.
Okay.
Nothing, this did not happen overnight, and it shows right here, it shows right here on the screen.
Mayor, get to the bottom of it, I still have.
Do you see that right here? For those people who are interested, those who are watching at home, it says standardized land use and code.
I still have the.
Right there, it says land use code eleven hundred, land use code activity description, it says household, it says private household. This did not happen in the last twenty-four to thirty-six months.
That's not what the mayor just said.
But that, what the mayor, this is what's in the county record.
That's not what I said, sir. I said, you said it happened.
Yes, and it didn't. This is in the county record, so the county is wrong.
Can I finish?
You said it's residential, that's a lie. There it is, right on the screen.
Okay.
You did it change in the last thirty-six months, that's a lie.
Either you or Eric Sabree's lying to this.
This is his, this is his database.
Okay.
This is put in the GIS system. Hey. Sure, there it is, right there.
Yeah, somebody's lying.
It's been that way, I mean, on, yeah, on Google Maps.
Okay, so, anyhow, so, we forever have a bad habit of doing things in this city that we're not supposed to do. We say we don't do it, but yet we do it anyway. We say they were not involved in things, but yet we're up to our next city. My question again, and it's the same question I keep asking you. If you're not looking for change, if you're not looking for the city to grow and get better, why the hell did you put me here? What was the purpose of you electing me? I'm tired of every time I ask a question, I get no answer. I asked for MCA's contract, you know how long it took them to give me that contract? A year and four months. I just got it a week ago. So, it took them a year and four months to give me a contract, in which they've had on file forever. But these are the games that I play. And every time, it's something new, something new, something new. Every day is something new. And you think I'm being a jerk about it, and you think I'm being an asshole about it, but I'm being honest with you. I love to trade spots with you. Maybe you can sit here and feel what I'm feeling. Or maybe you will have a better go at it, since they may be your friends, and y'all will get along a little bit better. Okay, but while I'm sitting up here, the only friend I got is a resident of Highland Park, because when I get off of this damn seat, I gotta live with the decisions I made that are gonna affect. that are going to affect my life just like they're affecting yours. See, I got the protection of the city right now. But what happens when I'm off this council? I have to live with them choices I made, right? Your former council members are living with the choices they made. If this city is going to get on a better footing, a better way of doing things, we have to do things according to the way that the law has set up for us to do things. It's always something new. We cut corners, we lie, we cheat, we steal. And then when I speak out about it, everybody's fucking offended. Understand? You look at me as if I'm saying something about your mother. That's how you look at me. Every time I speak out against you, you look at me as if I'm saying something about your mother. I get comments on Facebook, oh, the shenanigans of Kreshi. But the bottom line is, I asked for things to be done according to the way that they have it laid out and they have yet to do it. And that's not by accident. That's by design. So while we're digging and clawing, they're making their moves, doing what it is that they can do to squeeze what it is that they can do about it. And one of the things I got the biggest problem with are these damn water fees. I got an issue with that. Because the water in the sewage didn't go up. The water in the sewage actually went down by a couple of cents. It was your fees that went through the roof and I got a problem with that. Let's run through the fees. Administrative fees. Water ready fee. Sewer ready fee. Sewer, a sewer supply fee, water supply fee. There's a fee for the bill they sent to your home. Administrative fees, fees on top of fees on top of fees. And I got a problem w- with that because those fees, that money doesn't go to the Great Lakes Water Authority. That money gets to be kept by the city of Highland Park. That's their administrative fees for their operations. That's not the money we owe Glee.
You're going on twenty-five minutes, sir.
Okay, that's not the money that we owe Glee. And I find those fees to be unacceptable and they need to come down. I'm telling you, either they come down or somebody's got to go. And that's the problem. And I yield back.
Ms. Martin?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I want to start by saying thank you for being here today, for those who are in the audience and those who are on Zoom. Um, I want to address a couple of things. One, all the back and forth and the bickering. It doesn't feel like as a city or a city council that we're even winning. And if we're not winning, then what are we doing? It's number one. Number two, I want to talk about kind of like what Kreshi was talking about, you know, doing what we want. We can't keep doing business as usual like we have been in the past. You just heard Mr. Clark, well, no, was it Mr. Clark? Who said that we were broke like what, ten years ago? Who wants ten more years of that? Some things got to really change. You know, from, you know, we did doing things like can't bond Lisa. Why is that? That's not making any sense. But we don't know who, who bonded us before. She's not this, she's not that. She's the treasurer. We voted her as the treasurer. If she's not the treasurer because she's not bonded, then she's no more the treasurer than Tony as the deputy of finance. Doesn't make any sense. It's number one. Number two, you know, there's a lot of things that's been going on that don't make sense around Highland Park from, you know, not being able to open up the library, their mysterious money. Um, housing commission, all of a sudden they're gone like magicians. It's not making any sense. My question to you is, in this meeting today, what have you left with? What understanding do you have on the other side of that door from being here today? Right. It's not making any sense. Things need to change. My thing is this. Change is going to come. It's going to happen. It's going to happen because you're going to get bonded. Also, that library is going to get open. It's going to get open. My next question is, who can answer the question of what would it take to see what's going on with the library? Ms. Square, do you know that? Like, how do, no, but, hold on. Let me be clear with my question.
I don't want to answer it because I'll be taking too long.
I was thinking the same thing. I was thinking the same thing. I would, I know you will go around the mulberry bush. So.
Ask the mayor.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, what would it take to see what's going, to actually walk in and do a whole walkthrough with the library?
The library is not, the library will take about thirty million dollars.
No, 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 that's not what I asked. You're.
To walk through the library, you will need.
Take to do a walkthrough with the library. What would that take?
It will take a lot of protective gear. It will take a, a lot of.
So what protective gear do I need?
You will need.
What protective gear do I need? That's the question. What protective gear do I need? I need shoe covers?
No, 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 ma'am. No, ma'am. You will need a mask that will cause ventilation mask, not those kind of masks.
I got that. A nine, an N ninety-five?
No, ma'am. You would need the type that they wear with the little hoses and things on it.
Okay, respirator.
Respirating mask, right.
Okay.
And uh you would need somebody who can go in there with you that it also have that protection on. That means I would have to assign someone to go in with you who also has those protective gear.
When would you be able to do that?
Library has water in it. The library has.
When would you be able to do that? When would you be able to do that?
That's probably a question.
We can talk about that. You can give me a call.
I'll give you a call in the morning and then I'll give everybody an update by next meeting. And then I'm gonna pass it over to Manica.
First, let me address the question about what I said to Mr. Lasky. And that was based off of her resume. So if anybody has sat down and did interviews, real interviews or down, you interview people for what they're built for, for what they applied for, and then you see, excuse me, for what they applied for, on your thing, you say, hey, they fit that. So we had a nice conversation, including what she said. Okay, in regards to being community development, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what I meant by that. Stop taking stuff out of text the way you want to take it or where you want to put it. So it's a deal for what you think is going on. Again, I base mine off of what was in front of me. So if we're going to talk about doing things correctly, it's not for us to give her a bond. It keeps coming back that Highland Park needs to give her a bond. No, it's not. We're only paying for it. It's only paying for it. So that's the first thing to understand, that we're only paying for it. She should be able to go do what she needs to do to take care of her business. Now instead, since we're talking about this, she knew she didn't have a bond. She knew she didn't have a background check, but she thought, hey, let me go to City Hall and go into the Treasury Office and let me go play treasurer. And then when I came, this week, was it this week? I had a conversation. I said, well, she said, Mr. Lasky said to me, I was locked out. I was locked out. Why are you locked out? Because I don't have a bond. But here's the real key thing that got me. She said it only happens in Highland Park. It only happens in Highland Park, that we do things incorrectly. But instead, I got a whole bunch of people out here hollering, and I'm saying something that's wrong. All I said was, I looked at the resume. I said, I looked at the requirements that were not fulfilled. But then I hear, I was going to ask, but he done left. Mr. Shafi, I'm trying, I wanted to know exactly what it is if he really wants to know about MCA and, and what their qualification is. What is, does he want to know if they get too much money? And so maybe I could be on that same page. Maybe I'm not looking at the right thing. But I'm sorry. Might be voice, so uh I don't want to call it Jim Crow, but I don't know. I see three black engineers, four over there. They're not qualified or either there's something, I'm not saying they're not qualified. But evidently there's something that somebody wants to know. So let's just quit playing games. What do you want to know? What do you want to know? What are you trying to find out? Quit playing these games. It's just so straightforward. It's just real simple. Now, in regards to, I think it was a comment about um how you sustain from a vote. Listen, I can, that's what y'all got going on in y'all private life. I got enough of my own. I was just saying, because the same thing goes for me. If it's a situation that you need to sustain from a vote, then you need to do that. But at the same time, I, I'm still trying to figure out, there is a next step. If we did not have a treasurer, since everybody want to know what's with the treasurer, I'm asking the same thing. Why is it mandatory and we got to pick some person? Why does it seem like we got to have her? Well, there's a, there's a balance here. If we don't get one, they can only come in and be the treasurer until we get an elected one. I'm sorry. Somebody seem to think something's wrong with that. I don't, because that's the following steps. That's the following steps. My problem with the residents of Highland Park right now is that guess what? I guarantee you, if I had took notes, I see all of you all the time. No problem with that. I love the fact that you come, but the rest of them are not coming who have a different opinion about some of what you guys be out here talking.
Quite a few.
Okay, be out there talking for it. My next thing is, I don't know if anybody paid attention. I'm talking to my council people now. I asked the young man, have we seen you before? I don't think anybody realized where we seen them before. It was, it was the shoe situation. Yes.
We don't realize that.
This is not a city, this is not a school board meeting. This is not a school board meeting.
Because I'm not talking personally to you. I'm talking to my council members. So stay in line. I'm talking to my council members. I specifically said, I'm talking to the council members. And that's what's wrong. That's what's wrong. It's the, it's the, we don't know where the line is drawn. We do not know where the line is drawn. And no matter what I say, no matter what Demar say or anybody say, some of y'all seem to have a problem with it. But that's who you want to hear. See, I'm not into gossip, I'm not into drama and all that. I'm going straight for the fact. The fact of the matter is, is that we need to do things based in what we should be doing, we not doing. Because we're not looking at ordinance, we're not sitting down to correct them, to start looking at our charter, or not even the charter, just the ordinance. But that's what you should be caring about. When are they going to sit down and work on, update the ordinance? That's what you should be worried about. So everybody who needs to get a fix, please don't be mad when they show up and say, hey, you know what? It's been six months, it's been a year and you have not gotten a fix. Because there is something that happens after you don't follow what you're supposed to do. I get all these shake your head and all this other stuff, but guess what? I'm a fifth generation. So guess what? I know what it looked like before now. I know what it's going to look like if we don't keep it up. We keep up with the shenanigans we have going on. I guarantee you it's going to look different. You got to keep your own property up. You got to do a whole bunch of stuff that we're not doing. But we can't enforce it because we're not doing what we're supposed to do if we are a council member. Going back to the ordinance and charter and whatever else we're supposed to look at. Bringing it up to speed and up to date. We're so far behind. We're so far behind. But instead, we want to end fight. We want to end fight. And you end fighting. It's okay. This is what I'm talking about right here. We, we like to end fight. We like to play these, these shenanigans like we're the twelve, like we ain't, we twelve years old. We are not kids anymore. But you live how you want to live. But again, that's what I wanted to point out. Is that we should have gave the other young man the, the property.
Sure.
He came from what? Somewhere California? I don't know where he came. But he lived here too, but the other young man came up here and already have tons of property in Highland Park. But nobody realized who he was. Nobody realized who he was, but we said no to him earlier this year or last year. They just came with a different scenario. They brought a different narrative narrative. And of course, oh, I'm sorry. Or I, I keep, I keep thinking everybody else that comes here, they, everybody can play pitiful, except for us. Except for us. On a good note, on a good note, I appreciate everybody that participated in District One. Weekend this weekend, all the dumpsters were full. I didn't think they would be full, but they were. People did, people did come out or go and use the dumpsters to put in their, their trash or whatever they needed to get rid of. And so that was all the way to the far end. So dumpsters were all the way to um the north end as well as this side, and they were all full and it was all taken away. So great weekend to you guys for using them because I was worried that you did not. I have an asthma presentation. I will not give it tonight. I maybe I'll try to get it on a workshop. But it is an asthma presentation about asthma in our community. I also have information. Remember FEMA as well. Understand you are an area of urban flooding. That is a situation that is a disaster. Okay, if you have not reached out to them, and there are so many other resources in FEMA that you probably are not aware of. So please look at their website, research those things. Um, look forward to uh Community Baby Shower with Marcha Dimes. Well, Marcha Dimes, we're part of it, is part of the Dove Foundation, uh myself and Ladies and Ladies of the Beta Sorority. Uh, along with resources that will be held at the Police Department. Community Assistance Day went really well as well. I didn't get a chance because I wasn't here to say anything about it, but it went really well. They had a lot of people there. If you don't know what that is, uh, I have solicited most of the uh churches in the city to participate and having people like Wayne Metro and Thaw come in to provide those services to help you with your water bill or your utilities. So the first one for this year was really great. Again, thank Wayne Metro and thank Newmont Mariah Baptist Church for hosting that. I think maybe I've covered everything. We got some great other stuff that's coming up. Please look forward to it. Uh, got another surprise, but I'm gonna hold it. Uh, yeah, I'll hold that. Uh, so look forward to, remember the draft is coming. Keep our city clean. They got to come through us to go to downtown. Have a great night.
Madam Proton?
Hello, everybody. And I'm gonna slide over here so I can see my wonderful police chief. I don't know if I ever told you this before, but I love Highland Park. And I want to see it at its best. I want to see it better than it was that I remember. So for you to say, the reason why I said no is because you don't have the staff. And I'm figuring that you probably should have brought this to us once you had enough staff and you could prove that it would be open because I experienced ringing that doorbell. And no one answered. You called me and you weren't even there. Just ask somebody to come over the door for me. I want to see everything great in Highland Park. So please remember that. And I also want to reiterate again, because I keep hearing Glee War and Levy. Bylaws for the Great Lakes Water Authority Board of Directors. Section two, the Glee War shall not have power to impose or levy a tax. And if you want a copy of this, I'll give it to you. So I, I'm tired of hearing that. Oh, thank God, we didn't get to Levy and this.
No, that was in Detroit's name.
I'm, I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to anybody. I didn't even ask for no. I'm not, excuse me, thank you very much.
From, it's all.
Thank you very much. No, it's not. And anyway, like I said, if you want a copy of it, you can come and get it, or, or, and I'll send it to you. And that's all I got to say. I love y'all.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Lackey, do you have that video I asked you to pull up? You don't have to pull it up now. Do you have it ready?
I do.
Okay, hold on just a second. So I will get to that last. Okay, Ms. Washington, you're right. It costs a lot to live here. It costs a lot to live here. So if you want to invest in this, one of my questions I had is, why are we being so hard on people who want to invest here? Okay, why, why are we being so hard on people who want to invest here? It's, it's really a problem for me. Let me just state this. The LLC is the most common way that a property is listed in the United States of America. Most properties that are not private residences, and many private residences are listed in the name of a limited liability company. It's to protect the property owner from liability. That's what they were established for. That's why we went to war with the British, so that we could have our own protection, our own property. If we continue to penalize the people who want to come here, who have their property in LLCs, we're doing ourselves a disservice. This morning, I sat on the jury with the Detroit Collaborative Design Center. There were three projects for Highland Park. And I had, if, if I wasn't on that jury, they wouldn't even be considered. Hatch, Kip D. They did not include Highland Park before, but now they include Highland Park. I'm going to a Detroit land-based projects meeting on Tuesday in the City of Detroit. Why is all of this relevant? Because we look like goddamn fools. We look like goddamn fools with some of the antics that go on here. We have people spouting what they know when the facts on the screen are the complete opposite. We look like fools. So the whole, the whole issue with the back and forth, I said at the November sixth meeting that the people who are on this city council illegally, the ones who falsified their documents, that I was gonna follow that to the very end. And I already put up a post for citizens in Highland Park who want to report nefarious activities to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And after the last meeting that I went to, where you had somebody who's not even a councilperson walking in, sitting down at the table, and start talking on behalf of the city council. This all looks to me, with the way that the election was thrown, the litigator working on the election, working closely with the people that made all of the motions of the treasurer. It looks like a racketeer-influenced corrupt organization. You gotta have the right words, racketeer-influenced corrupt organization. I'm not that smart, and I'm dyslexic. So if I can get a chemistry degree, I can follow this thing through all the way to the end. Okay, Mr. Lackey, would you pull up that video for me? We're at seventeen forty-five is where it starts. This was last year, February twenty twenty-three. Go ahead, let that run.
Spirit, blessings to you all.
Thank you. Same to you as well, Ms. Joyce. And, uh, Jamal.
Good morning.
Hold on a second, pause that. Where is the remote? The remote for the television, so the people in the room can hear. Turn it all the way up, Mr. Lackey.
That's as far as I can get it up.
No, make sure that they hear this. Madam Third, do you know what the remote is for this television?
I do that, sir.
Run it, let me see if I can hear it.
You know, there's buttons on the side of the E.
Oh, is this it?
Yeah. Bring it over. One second. Go ahead, run it.
Connect our people with opportunities with the USDA. Everything that we do comes from agriculture, and there are many benefits that we can use to help take our city and state.
From a year ago.
Blessings to you all.
Thank you. Same to you, Ms. Joyce. And, uh, Jamal Thomas.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Today I sit in front of this distinguished body as the president of the council for the City of Highland Park. It is my joy to be here. I have only been in my role for thirty days, but I wanted to make sure that I came to this body to introduce myself. On behalf of our mayor, the Honorable Glenda McDonald, I want to extend, uh, greetings, salutations, and good tidings. Our city is, we are a part of the City of Detroit. In fact, you could not be any more in Detroit than to be in the City of Highland Park. We are a part of you, and I am a lifelong D-Boy. I'm a graduate of Bates Academy, Martin Luther King High School, and Wayne State University. I'm an undergraduate in chemistry and master's in dispute resolution. I am here today to ask you to look in our direction. Sadly, the story that I'm telling you is one of abuse and neglect. We have all seen those people, that woman and her children, who show up with the bruises and the scars. That is Highland Park. It is a burden for us all for us to be ignored. I encourage each of the distinguished members here to view our city council meetings. We had one last night, and it was a thing of chaos. There are forces at work that are trying to keep us from making the progress that we need to make to improve our city, and we cannot do that alone. Once again, our village is on fire. And what I'm here to find out today is, are you there for us?
Thank you so much, President Thomas. Thank you for coming down and joining us, and I would love to chat with you offline a little more about how we can all support you and your efforts in the city council's efforts in Highland Park. So we'll make sure we get your contact information and, um, see how we can support one another more.
Those two gentlemen already have it.
Okay, great, great. Thank you so much. Looking forward to it.
That was a year ago. I had no idea the type of BS that I was gonna go through, right after that, in a temp for an illegal towing contract. Then we spent the next three months fighting over marijuana. Then every month, following that, certain members on this city council refused to accept the monthly financial statement, and these people purport to decide who the treasurer is. I'm not letting up. The back and forth, it's not gonna be a back and forth. I've, I've held my hand, and what you've seen is restraint. Moving forward, ain't gonna be no restraint. I'm coming all guns blazing, because if you're gonna commit crimes and use this office, if you're gonna commit crimes to get in this office and then use this office to commit additional crimes, you should be held accountable. Our role on city council is to look out for the health, the welfare, and the safety, and we have spent over a year spinning our wheels. From the first day, Councilwoman Manica called me and said, we have ordinances that we need to fix. What about the Muni code? She was about the business. And all that BS that happened in the last year. It ain't gonna go like that in twenty twenty-four. Trust me, it ain't gonna go like that in twenty twenty-four. So, hey, are all stupid people criminals? No, most criminals are stupid people. Okay? Having concluded all business related to the City of Highland Park, the chairman will declare this meeting adjourned.